I want to welcome all of you to our business meeting today. It's a very full agenda, but we're going to start the day by with an invocation. The person who was designated to do our invocation is not here with us today. So I thought I saw a very handsome gentleman. There he is, our first gentleman, Kevin Nelson. Would you be willing to come see an invocation for us?
I should have more notice than this.
I know, fully duly noted. You got no notice.
Well, thank you. Please pray with me, and you can pray for me as I pray here without preparation. Lord, thank you. Thank you for a beautiful day. Thank you for important work to do. Thank you for this city that we all love so much. We are privileged to be here today, and we are going to make some important decisions today, and I pray for those who are making those decisions. We're going to make some proclamations that are important, and we're going to mark some milestones, all of which are very important, and I pray, Lord, that we will do it in a way that pleases you and marks this time, this unique time, and acknowledges that we are here for the purpose of loving each other as we love and serve you. So we just pray blessings and favor and continued favor over our city, Lord. Thank you, and we ask all of this in your precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Kevin. Could you join us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We have some very special guests with us today, and I want to invite you gentlemen, doctors, I see you standing off in the sidelines there. Come on, step on out to the center stage. Welcome to the city council chambers. Okay, you know, I love to read, and it's great to let the stories of other people's lives come off the words on a page. But in the year 2020, we left behind reading about history, and together we became makers of remarkable history. It was unexpected, it was unreal, and it was epic. All of us were shaped by it, many of us were tested by it, and in some of us greatness was revealed by it. Standing behind me today are five Amarillo citizens whose greatness was certainly revealed in 2020. Their individual work was important, and it was impactful, but their greatness shined in their collaboration. Effective response to any disaster takes a whole community approach. These medical leaders did just that, and they took a community approach to finding solutions to incredible trials. We constantly asked these men to give an accurate description, often an accurate prediction of something we had never seen before. What are the symptoms of COVID-19? How will it spread through our city? The wide breadth of duties placed on their shoulders was uniquely heavy. They were researching and studying about COVID-19. How did it spread? How long was a patient contagious? What drugs would work to treat it? There were so many unknowns in an ever-changing situation. They were managing large teams responsible for operating our hospitals, and they were hands-on in addressing the needs of their staff's personal safety, as well as making tremendous system and facility changes to keep our hospitals operating as safely as possible. They were personally making rounds and caring for individual patients. They were celebrating when those patients recovered, and they were grieving when a COVID struggle ended another patient's life. They gave unselfishly of their time and their expertise to meet often, and many times they met on little or short notice with city and state government officials to offer their medical expertise. They carved out time during their busy days, and they were available at all times of the day and every day of the week for over a year. In addition to these duties, they had to learn new skills, just like the rest of us, like Zoom, and how to give press conferences. They were committed to educating and informing our community, and they willingly joined those press conferences, sometimes as many as three a week. School districts, business owners, senior citizens, and concerned families soon came to know these doctors and trusted them, even though they had never met them face-to-face. Doctors, the city of Amarillo is grateful for your service to our community, and today we are honored to give each of you a key to the city, signifying our trust in you and our gratitude for your service, your sacrifice, and your leadership in a time of need. Please give them all a round of applause. Now, these guys are humble, and they're hating this, but I love it. You're going to have to endure a little bit more of it. I'm going to take a minute just to speak about each one of you individually. I'd like to invite the city council just to join me up here, maybe two of you on each side. Mayor Pro Tim Powell is going to grab each certificate and key, but Dr. Bell, will you join us up here? Just a few words to speak about Dr. Bell. The very first time I heard the name Todd Bell, it was from our Director of Public Health, Casey Stotin, and her exact words were, "Dr. Todd Bell is a national treasure." And at the time, I thought, wow, that's pretty awesome. But as time went on, I began to realize that was really not hyperbole. Early on in the pandemic, we struggled to get our minds around the volume of people that this would touch. We were all having to shift our thinking to much larger scale numbers, and that was difficult to do. But soon enough, all of us, everyone here, began to see shortages in things, different types of products, and one of the things we saw a shortage in was with regard to COVID testing. We needed testing supplies, and all of a sudden, we didn't have enough to test the people that we needed to test in order to keep the spread from skyrocketing. There was a shortage of something that most of us had never heard of before, viral transport media, VTM. And without VTM, a nasal swab can't travel and still predict an accurate test. So COVID testing was limited by the fact that we didn't have enough of this viral transport media. But Dr. Bell went directly into that problem, and he created a recipe for making our own VTM. And soon, the recipe was used by other cities across the state to make VTM, and it opened up the ability to test thousands of patients. And because of this, Texas is proud to be able to say that no one in the state of Texas who's wanted to be tested has not been able to be tested. So if only you had been able to do that for toilet paper, then we would have all been better off. But we are really grateful, Dr. Bell, for your service, and we're pleased today to present you with a key to the city for your service. Now, you guys might not know, but he's the new kid on the medical block in our city. Did you move in April?
I moved in May, the end of May. Actually, today is one year in my position.
Wow, wow. So not only did we say, "Welcome to the city of Amarillo," but we said, "Welcome to the city of Amarillo, and here's what we need, and we need it now, and we need you to be available," and basically hop to it. And the VA presents a really unique part of our medical community because they have to operate in the federal, in the federal system, right? So yes, you are a part of our community, but something that Dr. Gonzalez did, he landed in our community not having met any of these people face-to-face, and he strongly adopted the idea that he was an Amarilloan. And literally, from the day he took the helm, he changed how our medical community was interfacing with the VA hospital. The VA began to take transfers from our hospitals. They had space when our other hospitals did not have beds. That was a huge help. The VA has loaned us vaccine, and at the city clinic, when they had vaccine that they could not get into arms, and they knew it could be in arms at the city clinic, they gave us vaccine, which we were then able to replace as soon as our shipments came in. So I am thrilled to have you at the VA hospital, and I want the entire city to know that even though you've only been here a year, you've been an Amarilloan for a year, you have had a tremendous impact that will last, I think, for a very long time in how our medical community is now able to better cooperate and work with the Veterans Administration Hospital. So thank you very much. It's with our pleasure that we're presenting you a key to the city of Amarillo.
Thank you.
Our next two doctors, Dr. Weiss and Dr. Lamontier, were truly on the front lines of this battle. The front lines of our response centered really at Northwest Texas Hospital and at Baptist St. Anthony's. They're both chief medical officers for those hospitals, and they worked tirelessly to manage the challenges of their staffs and their facilities, but most importantly, they worked for the common good of our community. These guys are typically in a competitive role with each other. I know it's kind of strange to think of that in a medical sense, so don't, but truly, the collaboration that we saw between our two hospitals was humbling, it was life-saving, and I think it was community-changing permanently. They led teams that greatly expanded our hospital capacity to meet our needs as the crisis grew. So not only are they addressing staffing issues, and there were staffing issues, but they are literally rebuilding the hospital while it is breaking records for patient population. They are figuring out how to increase ICU capacity. They are working on ventilation systems so that we are not contaminating different parts of the hospital that are not COVID-related. They led teams that did all of this work, all the while, these guys were still seeing patients, and they were providing medical expertise to us anytime we needed it. Both of you were a tremendous resource to Kevin Starbuck and to Casey Stotin. You were always available, and I never, ever, ever saw an ego walk into the room anytime I had a meeting with the two of you. You inspired me, and you humbled me, and without it, our community would have lost so many lives. So it is with great pride that we're presenting this to you today. I want to just pause for a minute. I want to say, their personalities are not very much alike, if you know them at all. Dr. Weiss became really kind of the star of our press conferences every week. I don't know if that was a talent you knew about before that opportunity, but you are very gifted as a public speaker and as a teacher, and it was very clear that your heart was for people to understand and to know that we cared about them and how to educate them to make the best health decision they could make for themselves. So I always appreciated that, and Casey told me that your team was always a yes to whatever they, the city asked you to help them set up, do, conceptualize, operate. So just that yes attitude and yes response was so helpful during the crisis. Yeah. On the other side is Dr. Lamontier. He is the no-nonsense personality in the room, and I very much appreciate that. That's important in a crisis. He is not a yes man. He is a just-the-facts man kind of approach. So between the two of you, you guys tandem to make a very strong communications team, and I think it was a very effective public communications team because some people need to hear it in a lighter approach, and some people want just the facts. So between the two of you, we covered a lot of bases from a citizen's point of view in how they wanted to receive updates and information about the COVID crisis. BSA was a tremendous partner during all of this. They were the first to transfer Moderna vaccines to the city, and that, I was there when that offer came. It was in the moment, I saw the idea on your face. You made the offer, Mike, to Casey and said, "We have vaccine. You can get it in arms faster than we can get it in arms." And you got it right over to the clinic, and Casey did her job. She did that very thing. And then again, when they approved the Pfizer vaccine for kids, you had vaccine available before we did, and you knew we could be getting it into teenagers, so you offered the Pfizer vaccine. And that was so impactful in keeping the momentum going and getting the city vaccinated. You guys were a tremendous part of how we succeeded on a national scale of being one of the most successful cities to do the vaccine rollout, and I want folks to know that part of the story, too. So would you both, would you guys please give both of these doctors a round of applause? And I want us to take your pictures together because I think it's significant that you collaborated to serve the city. Let's do one more. We've got one more doctor, then we'll do everybody. Sorry. And then last is Dr. Scott Milton. I didn't even make any notes about Scott because there's just so much in my heart to say. Step up here by me, so. I think Scott has the hardest job in the world, what you lay awake at night and worry about on a big scale of impacting so many people, and having to think forward. I can't tell you the number of times that I looked at him, and I said, "Dr. Milton, how fast is this going to move? How big is it going to land? Tell me what the timing on it is going to be." And he always calmly, logically, reasonably worked through the information that he had, and he gave me the best answer he could give me in that moment. And I know he was getting those same kind of questions from Casey, from Kevin Starbuck, from school districts, from a lot of different places in the city. But the pressure that sits on your shoulders, Scott, was, it was sitting on your shoulders alone. We only have one public health authority, and you have a great team of people who surrounded you, who encouraged you, but you held the weight of it for all of us, and I'm grateful. The city is grateful, and I want to say you did your job well. We're very, very proud, and I'm pleased on behalf of the city to be able to present you a key to the city of Amarillo.
Thank you.
There are a lot of amazing things that we could say about Dr. Milton, but I will leave you guys with this one thing. If someone had a COVID case in the city of Amarillo and they were hospitalized for it, Dr. Milton saw them. He rounded on every single patient who was COVID-positive and hospitalized in our city, and over the course of a year, that is thousands of people. That's a pretty amazing statistic, Scott, and it just reveals how dedicated you've been during all of this to serve whoever needed help, and we're really, really grateful for it. So doctors, would y'all move to the middle? Are our mics on, Leanne? Yeah? They are? Okay. Testing them. Okay, that feels better. Yeah, thank you. Okay, now let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is public address, and I will turn that over to Jennifer Ramirez.
Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we value, we are glad that you're here to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items. To ensure all who wish to speak are able to, we limit each speaker's time to three minutes. At the end of two and a half minutes, a warning beep will sound from the time clock so that you have time to wrap up your thoughts. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act and state law, speakers are asked to limit their comments to items on the posted agenda. Doing so will ensure we are all following the guidelines and are able to have effective and beneficial meeting for all. Thank you for your consideration for this process and for your valuable input. The first speaker today will be James Schenk, and up next after that will be Tom Sherling.
Oh, anyway, good to be back. Hey, just wanted to start talking today about last week's meeting, which involves 3C today on the COs. On May 25th, y'all had a council meeting, and I watch the council meetings and request some of you to use your microphones a little bit better. You know, you get up here and you can hear it, especially on TV. Now, you started talking about the city hall, and, you know, I was interested in what you were having to say there, but I also had in mind that since that was a part of the bond project, that you really wouldn't be able to start messing with that for three years. But instead, now we're moving on that. So all of a sudden, as you went through the $5.5 million to fix this building, to get it up to where it is running in '28 and '31, all of a sudden, there was what I considered a vote at a work session, basically, a consensus that went on, and you took an action from there that was almost like you had a vote, which I think one of the things that needs to be unbundled is presenting to the audience and the citizens what $5.5 million would do to this building, what $28 million would do to this building, more than what Jerry put up, and what $31 million would do to really an older building than this one. So the action plan was really treated as an agenda item. And now here we are today fixing to receive information on getting a CO. When it was happening, I was watching it on TV, and I actually said out loud, "You can't do that. You can't do that, not in an open meeting. You didn't have it on the agenda to basically vote on it," which it looked like that's what happened. Okay, now on to 1C. We have a P3 committee, Civic Center. Come here. P3, I hope you'll explain that when you're going through here in a little while and get an update from them for next steps. Here we are back in, circling back, talking about something that seven months ago was voted down 62% to 38% by the citizens, which I wish we would do our elections for municipal in the, in the, in November. You would have this kind of turnout, and we'd get more of a consensus of the whole city of who should be sitting. And then the last one was another thing. It's 1D, potential revenue sources for the Civic Center. We talked about bringing in some back when you tried to start the first one, but it was like, no, no, we're just going to do 300 million and build one. Boom. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schenk. Up next is Tom Sherling, and on deck is Justin Furrow.
First of all, thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to come and speak before the commission today. I know it's a privilege and an honor because y'all don't have to listen to us if you don't want to. But what I would like to say is, James said a little bit of what I wanted to say, but what I wanted to circle around is that when I was running for office, I talked to a lot of people and a lot of citizens in this town who were really felt disconnected from the city council. They felt like their vote didn't count, and by continuing on with this CO today, what we're doing is telling our citizens, "Your vote doesn't count. That election in November didn't mean a thing, but what we decided is what y'all are going to decide today. We're going to start Phase 1, which is tear down City Hall." That's what it said in all the news releases. I went back the last few days looking at news reports, pulling up KMR, KVII, Amarillo Globe News, and every one of them had in Phase 1 was to tear down City Hall. And I just wish we would look at that because we don't want to send a false message to the citizens that we don't listen. And if you decide to go ahead and do this, I would like to see at least let the people vote. Let them express their feelings. Don't just go out with a, whatever vote it might be. I would just like for y'all to let the citizens go out and say, "Yay or no?" I'm not saying we don't need a new city hall. I'm 100% behind one. I just don't like the way we're going to try to pay for it. So that's something I would like to think about. And then also, I would like to add that when you look at the numbers that were presented, the $31 million compared to the $28 million, that is really not a good number because as we all know, in the last three months, construction costs have gone up tremendously. And if you take what we see today, a 20% to 30% rise, I think I saw on the news the other day, building materials up 30%. So if you take 30% and add it to the projection, you said no more than 35, and it was 31, we're not in the ballpark yet. So I would like for us to just sit back, take our time, let's look at it, see what we can do. I mean, I'm in agreement on a lot of things. All I want to do is let the people decide. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sherling. Thank you, Mr. Sherling. Up next is Cheston Farrow, and after that will be Michael Ford.
I want to speak today about the Thompson Pool Project and the Northeast Quadrant property buy that you'll be discussing in executive session. Today, the question will be asked, is the pool ready? I ask the question, are we ready for the pool? I'd like to discuss the, speak to the Thompson Pool Project, the Northeast Quadrant Property Buy, which is under discussion in executive session. My name is Cheston Farrow. Seventy-one years ago, my grandfather brought, bought a house in the area of 24th and Grand. My grandmother still lives in this house. Four generations of my family live in this area of town. I would like to begin by thanking our city leaders for the new investments in our part of town. I have three small children and I'm looking forward to using the new pool at Thompson Park. But I'd like to bring to the attention of the city leaders the need for new and upgrade, and upgraded infrastructure to support these projects. I would remind you that the reason for the need of the new pool at Thompson Park was that the original pool was old. And this describes the entire part of the Northeast Quadrant of Amarillo. By moving the pool to the north end of the park, traffic will also move to the north entrances of the park located on Hastings Avenue. This road is old. It is the most efficient route, though, from my house to the pool there at Thompson Park. It is narrow, it's dangerous because of trucks that use this road. The intersections near the pool will need upgrading. I would also like to praise the city leadership for bringing in the warehouses and the industries along Northeast Loop 335. I would like to remind you that in your negotiations for the new property in this area, that you figure in the needed upgrades to make this property successful. I would like to remind city leadership that the surrounding roads in this area are also old. Roads that were designed 100 years ago do not to meet, do not meet the modern standards. An example of this is the corner of Northeast 24th and Eastern. Yesterday, the city came out and worked on this corner. I am grateful for what they did because a few months ago, I busted a shock on my truck in a pothole in this very section of road. But life experience with this intersection has taught me that the work that was done will only last a short time. The intersection floods when it rains, undermining the road base and the, and the International Paper Company, which is located at that intersection, brings in raw materials on trucks that far outweigh the design limits of this road. In a year's time, we'll have the same problems that were fixed yesterday. I begin by telling you, my grandfather buying, bought a house in this Northeast Quadrant area. For the last 71 years, my family have paid taxes that were used to build Amarillo. My family and others like us in the Northeast Quadrant, through our taxes, have invested in Southwest Amarillo by giving you a high quality of life and modern infrastructure to live your daily lives. I am just asking for return on this investment. The Northeast Quadrant is in great need of upgrading so that the quality of life matches the rest of Amarillo. In negotiating to buy property in Northeast Quadrant, are you budgeting not only to buy the property, but making the upgrades necessary to the surrounding area? I'd like to know that the city will be good neighbors to us in the area. Again, thank you for the new pool and the property purchase for the future jobs that you will give us in Northeast Amarillo. I leave you with, I have a plan as well, ideas for upgrades, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrow. Next is Michael Ford. And up on deck is Alan Feingold.
Can I adjust this microphone? It's a little bit too obscured there. It's a little difficult for guys like me. Mick, did you know I was coming today? Good to see you. Good to see you. My name is Michael Ford, and I rise to speak on two issues today. The first issue is 3C on your agenda. I'll make two brief points regarding your agenda item. One, the proposal is illegal on its face, as Texas law forbids the use of COs for three years after the voters have rejected an identical project of the polls. Voters rejected your package of projects under Proposition A in November, including the $22 million project to relocate city services to the Amarillo Hardware Building. End of story for three years. Two, in arriving here today, you blatantly violated the Open Meetings Act notice requirements, further tainting your actions today. While you properly noticed the City Hall renovation update, under Item 1C on your May 25th agenda, there are no legal notice for the city councils receiving a presentation for a $35 million conversion of the hardware building. The city council deliberations regarding the pros and cons of staying here or going, nor the conduct of a straw poll of the city council by the mayor, followed by, with instructions to the city staff to proceed with plans to convert the Amarillo Hardware Building into a new, new city hall. The violations of taking a straw poll of the city council and delivering direction to the city staff is especially egregious violation of the Open Meetings Act. The second matter concerns 1B on your agenda, very different, and I hate to rain on the auspicious occasion today, but under the federal laws governing emergency use by authorizations that the current unapproved COVID vaccines are issued under, the law clearly states that anyone considering receiving one of these injections be in provided informed consent. What is informed consent? Is it hearing only one side of the story? Is it only about the continuous mantra coming from this chamber and this city government extolling how great this wonderful technology is with no, zero information also on the harms that these injections create or are causing? Since you only hear about lotteries, donuts, beer, and joints being provided as inducements, that's in Washington State, to bribe people into taking these unapproved experimental drugs and become part of the experiment for two years, how about some counterpoint? According to CDC's own VAERS database, there have been 294,801 adverse events reports submitted to VAERS through May 21st, 2021. Critically, CDC has stopped tracking all people who've contracted COVID after being vaccinated, instead only opting to track people who've been hospitalized or have died from these vaccines. And what are those numbers, according to CDC? Hospitalizations are 700, 17,619, and deaths are 5,165. To make matters worse, we are now only finding the results of these experimental substances go into the body where they go. After both the Harvard study and the Japanese government study show that these toxic spike proteins do not stay in the injecting site in the deltoid, but rapidly disperse and concentrate in the ovaries, the heart, the brain, the liver, skin, and salivary glands. Now we're talking about giving these to our kids. This is perhaps the most insidious of all. Children are one-third of our population and all of our future. There's nothing in the data that would support this. Children who'd rarely have any COVID symptoms from COVID are dying from these experimental injections. Enough is enough. It's well past time to end this propaganda, stop listening to people, only stand to profit from these injections to people who bear no liability if they're wrong about their recommendations, and start telling people the truth about these injections so they might exercise true informed consent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Up next is Alan Feingold. And on deck is Alan Abraham.
I didn't have any intention of addressing this council about COVID, but I'm not going to let that go by without a comment. Certainly, people should have informed consent, but when we've had over 600,000 deaths in the United States from COVID, and we have a precipitous drop in that number after substantial numbers of persons have been vaccinated, I think it behooves us to give credit where credit is due. But I also think that this commission should seriously consider having a meeting concerning public health and respiratory disease in general so that the public does not get misled in the future. This is long overdue. I addressed the commission about one-half dozen times concerning the matter of chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, long before anybody had heard of COVID. I do think that the commission should have a special meeting where you have physicians, such as the experts that you had here, address the general public. They actually had to deal with this on a person-to-person basis. Now, I wanted to address you on a matter concerning employment in the city. I think it's 3B. And I'm going to have to make it very short. For persons who are doing heavy-duty labor, the city of Amarillo has consistently underpaid them for decades. You need to bring up that wage to at least $12 an hour. It's not only a matter of fairness, it's a rudimentary matter of common sense. If you have somebody that obtains a skill over a period of two to four years and are hard workers, and the city does not continually raise their wages, or do not, does not raise the wage in a way comparable to what they could get in private industry, it's highly likely you're going to lose a significant number of those individuals. It's become a real serious issue in terms of your water and sewer departments. You have an opportunity to do a tremendous amount of work in the near future on replacement of old water lines. You've made a good start on it, but there's way more to be done. If you want to get this done in a timely fashion, say within the next five to six years, you've got to address the matter of underpaying people who are laboring in water and sewer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feingold. The last speaker is Alan Abraham.
Obviously not alphabetically. Mr. Abraham, from Randall County. Mayor, council. I rise to speak to Item 1G, which is a non-actionable item today, and I recognize that. I just want to put a, a positive word in, a word of support for a project that's been underway for a year now, at least. And that's called the rezoning initiative for the North Heights neighborhood. I'm not a part of that neighborhood as far as a resident, but I am a part of that community from my involvement back with the St. Anthony's Hope Hospital, not hotel, hospital development, and been very current with the neighborhood organizations that are involved in planning for the future for that neighborhood. And what I want to say and, and make clear to each and every one, because zoning sounds like a city project, and it really, this project is a city assisted project. It is a neighborhood project. The city is lending its assistance with its special, special staff, specialty staff, and with some, some finances to help four neighborhoods in our city start working toward the future, to unbind themselves from the past and to move forward for a future. And the North Heights has a tremendous and important future as a neighborhood. It's full of, it's, it's a residential neighborhood primarily, with commercial development along the tracks on the southern side. But to the north, it's really residential, and that's what those residents want. And this is a community initiative to get that zoning, which is the foundation for future development of land use in a community, so that land is, can be incentivized for developers to come in and fill in the blank spaces and help develop a pattern of neighborhood services along the business corridors that are already established. So, let's just think of this as neighborhood initiated, city assisted. And it comes from this document, the North Heights Neighborhood Plan, an amendment to the Amarillo Comprehensive Plan dated January 10, 2017. I support this and I wish for your support as well, when, when it becomes actionable. Thank you.
Thank you all very, very much. We'll move on to agenda item number one. Item A on that, we have a very thick agenda packet today, council, so this is your opportunity, just right up front at the start of the meeting, to bring anything up to the city manager's attention. That before we move through this, is there anything you want explained or have questions about in the packet?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to have Item 2H on the consent agenda. Just a little bit more explanation on that.
Okay, we'll pull that. Yeah, that's fine. Let's talk about it now.
Glenn, can you or Stephanie, one, I'm not sure who, who needs to come up and, and speak to that? So we've got Glenn Lavender, Director of Fleet, and Stephanie Coggins.
Stephanie Coggins, Public Works Manager. So, and Glenn Lavender, Superintendent for Fleet, so happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. I would just like a brief explanation. I see the item is approximately a little over $2 million, so if you could just kind of share with us the equipment and stuff that we're gonna be purchasing.
Yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to. Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity this afternoon.
Can you raise your microphone? Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, is that better? Okay, very good. This item is actually a scheduled replacement of equipment that the city of Amarillo uses by multiple departments, solid waste, street department, wastewater collection, and also wastewater distribution. I do realize that the transmittal memo that's, that got sent through for some reason just says solid waste and hollow waste disposal. But this is for 25 large vehicles that we use throughout the city, everything ranging from residential side loader trucks to 12-yard dump trucks for street department to use, to service utility trucks for water and water distribution. One roll-off truck to be used by another department for the roll-off containers that we have in town, and a water truck that will be used at the, for street department to do various duties throughout the city. And as you add those up, it, it comes up pretty high, $2.6 million. That's true, that is a large amount. But these trucks, there's 25 trucks on this agenda, on this item, that will be used throughout the city of Amarillo in different areas.
Thank you, Glenn. I really appreciate that. I just wanted our citizens that are watching to understand where the dollars are gonna be spent.
Yes, ma'am. As they drive around town and stuff, they'll see the new trucks driving around, and hopefully the new trucks, the, where they've been designed, where they're more efficient and stuff like that to help us control other costs throughout the operations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Glenn, before you step down real quick.
Yes, sir.
So Frida, yesterday, the city manager told me that we had 2.55 in the given budget, 2.55 million. This total cost is 2.63 million, so we're a little bit over budget to purchase these trucks. I'm assuming that, you know, we're able to procure this through local Roberts Truck Center, is that correct? We're able to use a local vendor to buy these?
Yes, sir. They all are coming from the local vendor, and there has been a change in that also. What happens when the agenda, the bid item went out, line item number five, I'm sorry, line item number three only called for two trucks. While that was out, line item number nine, which is a, was a truck for Hollywood Road Treatment Plant, was canceled. They wanted to go with a similar truck that was on line three. So when we redo the math and stuff, yes, the bid is for 2.63. We actually had 2.75 in the budget, so we're actually 14,000 under budget when you figure in that other truck that got moved around.
I apologize for giving you inaccurate information yesterday.
Sorry, that's my fault, too.
What happened was we didn't include that one truck in the projected budget for this purchase, so.
Well, that's great to know. I appreciate that. And then I know that there are some other funds that, that contribute to the purchase of these. So, bottom line from you, Glenn, you're getting what you need and, and we're not over budget.
That, that is correct, sir. Yes, sir. We try to do, we try to stay under our budget as best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, guys, for being available and ready to answer those questions. Council, anything else in the packet that you want to? And Council, or Mayor Pro Tim Powell, are you satisfied then on that? Can we leave that item on the consent now, or?
Yes, Mayor, that's exactly what I would like to do. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to Item 1B with a coronavirus update, Mr. City Manager.
Hi, Mayor. We have Casey Stotin, Director of Public Health, here to give us the update. We'll also give, I'll also touch very briefly on ARP funds.
It's good to stack tall people and short people kind of staggered, so the microphone gets lots of use today. So I do want to say thank you for the proclamation earlier. One good thing about wearing a mask is that no one can see you cry. So, I was good to also have a minute to collect myself, so I appreciate that. Just a good team to work with, so. So as of today, there are a total of 34,534 cases of COVID-19 in Potter in Randall Counties, 17,574 cases in Randall County, I'm sorry, in Potter County, and 16,960 cases in Randall County. We have a total of 33,511 recoveries, and we are thankful for each and every recovery. We do have 762 deaths here in our community. That leaves us with 261 active cases. Our numbers are getting better, so the seven-day rolling positivity rate is at 2%. The positivity rate at the drive-through testing site is currently at 0%. We're testing maybe one or two patients a day, so it's nice that they're testing negative. And the five-day new case average is down to 13 new cases per day. Yesterday, our GA34's hospitalization percentage was at 2.27%. That means that just over 2% of all hospitalized patients have COVID-19. The public health drive-through does remain operational at the testing site. Individuals can call 378-6300, and you probably all have that phone number memorized now. Individuals can call 378-6300, and you probably all have that phone number memorized now, can be screened and directed to the test site. The vaccination clinic is also operational at the civic center through entrance number four, they're in the regency room. We're open until 7:00 PM tonight, so if you haven't gotten your vaccine, now is a great time to do that. Emerald Public Health has given a total of 132,956 doses of the Moderna vaccine, split around two-thirds first doses, a third second doses. And we've also given just over 609 doses of the Pfizer vaccine to adolescents aged 12 to 17. Thursday, our team will be back at the El Alamo Community Center from 10 to 5 for the mobile COVID vaccination center. And I do have, we had a meeting, the expert vaccine allocation panel, we had a meeting yesterday. I can provide an update here, or I'd be happy to send an email through the city manager's office, I know we have a full agenda, so.
Yeah, we do have full agenda, let's do it by email if that's okay.
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a few, if it's okay. Howard, did you have a question?
Why don't you go first, Councilmember?
I'm sorry, I jumped in there. Casey, thank you. I know we're a community that really likes to communicate, keep everything out in the open, and I think that develops trust. So, Mr. Ford's comments, and I believe it's fine gold, to help address both of those.
Sure.
And this may not be possible, but I'm just going to throw them out there and ask, like, our informed consent, is that a public document? Can we provide that so that, you know, if our public wanted to read, hey, what are we signing if I go down there to take the vaccine?
Absolutely. We're happy to put that on emmerilloalerts.com. We have a fairly thick packet of information that we provide to patients whenever they come to clinic, because we, we believe, I mean, well, informed consent is, you have to do that, like, we have to provide informed consent. And so, and we want to provide informed consent, it's the right thing to do. And so, we have a fairly thick packet that we provide to patients whenever they come for their vaccine. We're happy to put that on emmerilloalerts.com. We have that available in English and Spanish, because it's important that people are able to have the information that they need to make the best decision for themselves. So, yes, we do have that.
And we're, we will have informed consent for the minors as well? Is that a separate packet that the parents signs, or are those the same?
It is a little different, but it's, it's the same information about the vaccine itself. The, the information is different in just how they, like, how the parent signs as opposed to, like, signing for self, it's signing for child.
Okay.
Casey has a follow-up question to that. Have we provided informed consent to everyone who's come to get a vaccine in our clinic? I mean, over 132,000 times?
Yes, and we provide informed consent for everything that we do. So, if you're coming for TB testing, or if you're coming for a tetanus shot, or if you're coming for STD treatment, we provide informed consent for all of those procedures. So, this isn't new, but it is absolutely something that we do.
Okay.
And it's very thorough.
It is very thorough.
It's very thorough.
Councilmember Stanley?
Yes, thank you. And I think in the follow-up with that, are we following up for, you know, our vaccine clinic, you know, individually or as a group? Do we have a policy, a protocol in place where if anybody did have an adverse reaction, they are reaching out to us so that we can make sure we're in front of that?
Yes, so we have two ways that people do that. So, they have access to us through the, our phone number, so the 378-6300, if you don't have that memorized yet, it's a great opportunity now. We also have an email address, and those are on the informed consent, so covid@emerlo.gov. And so, people have reached out a number of times, you know, if their arm is still sore, or sometimes, you know, you may have a little redness, we're able to work through those situations individually, and so patients are able to reach out to us. And usually, I respond to them just because the team is working, and so I'm at the computer and able to do that, so I'll usually call or respond via email to patients.
Thank you, Casey.
Casey, just colloquially, because I don't know that you're necessarily scientifically tracking it, but have you had any life-threatening type responses or any, any feedback there that you felt like it was dangerous to someone's health to receive that vaccine?
No, we've had maybe one, one, maybe two situations where we administered Benadryl. I think it was more.
And that was at the clinic?
That was at the clinic. So, we do have patients wait 15 minutes, and after their vaccine, if they've, if they have, if there's extenuating circumstances, maybe they have lots of allergies to lots of different medicines, then we may, you know, working with that patient, they may wait 30 minutes, but I think we had one patient where we've administered Benadryl, but we've not had any situations that were more serious than that.
Any other questions, Council?
No, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Smith?
I've got a comment. You recognize all these doctors, which helped us for over a year. Casey was at every one of those meetings. We've recognized her, but she was a big part.
Yes, yes.
Getting us through COVID. So, I just wanted to say that again.
Absolutely. We should say it 100 more times, that our, our community would not be where it is in its successful response to the COVID pandemic but for the leadership and dedication of our public health department. It is a team over there, and it's a team that partners well with the team here in the executive offices of the city manager's office, and Casey, you are such a vital part of that team. We've watched you grow in your leadership, but you have a natural gift of leadership, and it is filled with compassion for people. So, thank you for all of the things that you've done to serve our city, and we'll keep thanking you.
Sure.
Yes, very, great point, Howard, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Aren't you glad you have the mask on?
I am, back to wearing the mask.
Thank you.
Just one more thing on.
Yes, sir.
Before we jump from coronavirus, the American Rescue Plan funds, we are currently analyzing, still analyzing, the interim final guidance that we received. It's 150-page doc, pages of documents that, that give the outlines of how the American, what the ARP funds can be spent on, how they can be spent, what type of projects, things like that. We anticipate that the comment period for jurisdictions and citizens to comment about what is in the interim final guidance will end July 16th. Then there's going to be a period of time where they will review, incorporate if appropriate those comments, so we don't know exactly when the final guidance will come out, but as soon as we have the final guidance, we will work with y'all to take, to get input from Council, to prepare options and for, for ways to move forward in compliance with ARP guidelines.
I heard you give an answer in a meeting this week, Jared, that was, I thought, so great. A citizen had dutifully read the summary of what ARP funds could be spent on, because they're, they're coming with strings attached to them, they're only, you can only spend them for certain things, and this very well-informed citizen brought up this category, but your point was, that was a summary, maybe a two- or three-page summary, of 150 pages of guidance. And so, what got summarized and interpreted by this citizen getting informed was not something that actually the funds could be spent for. So, I, I do think it's important for people to understand that, number one, we can't spend those dollars on anything, they're not a blank check, they're going to come with restrictions, and even if you're reading a summary, which, that's all I've been reading about it, too, because I haven't dedicated time to process 150 pages of what's not even yet final guidance, it's sometimes in the summarization of those large pieces of information, it's hard to accurately portray what types of projects will be allowed for those dollars. So, I thought you did that very well in a meeting this week, wanted to point that out. Okay, any other questions from the Council that are coronavirus-related? Okay, moving on, item 1C. This item is unique, and I think this might be a good time to actually address a couple of questions that were brought up in public address, if you don't mind, Mr. City Manager. Perhaps we could have, we've got a stand-in city attorney here, Mick McCamey's here, while our city attorney is out this week, but just to address how, how we can move forward talking about options for a project that was previously on a bond ballot. So, just because there was a bond in November related to a civic center project, how, how is it that Council can move forward looking at options and beginning to research and investigate what next steps should be related to that project?
Mayor, I think you just said it, there's no restriction on planning, and that's really what you're asking for here, is updates and recommended next steps, and you address timing during your planning sessions, so, and we'll certainly be ready to give you legal advice at that time.
Yeah, I, that, I think that is, that's where we are as a Council, is just wanting to know how, how we move forward and plan. The project, the existing facility has desperate needs, and it's not competitive, so we need to know, we, we did listen to citizens, and we heard what they said, we appreciated that input, and now we need to move forward with that input in mind. That very input is what's going to guide us on how we move forward, so now we have to research that. And to that end, there was a two-person, basically a scouting committee appointed back in February, I think it was, just to go and explore what ideas there might be for funding a civic center project differently than what was on the ballot in November. So, in the, in November, what was on the ballot was for the property taxpayer to bear all of the cost of doing that project, and citizens said no. And so, definitely listening to what citizens said in November, now we're moving forward, looking at, are there other options to possibly do this type of project but pay for it without the same burden on the property taxpayer? So, Mr. City Manager, I'm going to hand it to you with that background, unless, Council, do you have any other questions related to the public address comments about why we're talking about this, or how we're moving forward on this?
No, Mayor, I don't, I think you've covered it for me.
Okay. So, Mr. City Manager, I'll pass it to you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to Andrew Freeman, he was one of the people on that subcommittee, and was present at all the meetings, all the different things that we've done throughout this process, and, and of course, we definitely need to, are you going to bring up the whole team, or?
Yes, I'll introduce him here in a few minutes, but yes, Jason Herrick was the, the other member of the team, he volunteered me to give the presentation, though, so. He's available to answer questions as well as once we get through the slides, and, and then the recommended individuals are here to go over their background and answer any questions as well. So, yes, just to further elaborate on.
Can I pause you for just a second?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, what, what the Council asked you to do when you guys agreed to serve on this was truly go out and fact-fine, go out and discover what are the options, what are other cities doing, is there a way to do this other than asking the property taxpayers to bear the entire cost of it? And we did not know what the results of that, you guys essentially were a search party on how to fund this project differently. So, with that in mind, I should have said that at the beginning, too, with that in mind, we're looking forward to receiving basically a report on what you guys found when you went out and did this research.
Correct. Yes, so yes, just a little background to elaborate on that, so it was November 2020, shortly after the election, is when this committee was formed, and just like the mayor said, it was to look at different options that didn't fully fund this project on general property taxes alone, getting a little more creative, seeing how other cities, other states have done it. So, over those first couple of months, Jason and I focused on just researching anything and everything we could find as far as projects in Texas, or projects in adjacent states, just how did they do it, how is it funded, who were the different parties involved, and a lot of similarities started to come out of ways that these can be layered to not just be general obligation, property tax debt-funded projects, is what we were, what we were finding, particularly related to convention centers. Hotels is another example that public-private partnerships, which is what P3 stands for, are successful in, as well as similar projects like the Globe News facility across the street. These are all examples of what we found. And then, during that timeframe, we also started to identify potential P3 partners that have done this successfully, and which projects they worked on. And so, our, our very next step was, we wanted to meet these individuals, learn more about what they do, what they thought about our project, where we could maybe benefit from a P3 partnership, and that led to the next step. In February 2021, we developed a written concept request, basically, to send out to these five individuals that we met with, to get their responses, of their background, what their qualifications were, their references. We had four responses, and then April through May of this year, we met with each one, discussed their, their submittal, involved myself and Jason, as well as different community members. We wanted to get more input in the process and get their feedback, which was very good, and then that led to, we kind of had a couple of finalists out of that process, we had additional interviews with, Mayor was able to also sit in on one of those and provide some feedback through the process. And then, that's led us here to today, we're wanting to introduce the one that we're basically recommending through this fact-finding process, that it does, we believe, make sense to bring on a private partner to work with us on this endeavor, to investigate different opportunities, look at our numbers again, look at our revenue sources, maybe consider other ways to operate the facility that would save dollars and make this project viable. So, that group is Garfield Public Private LLC. They are based out of Dallas, so we've got them here today to really present their background, let you get a little more familiar with them, so, and based on the feedback we received from Council, we would recommend entering into an agreement, a professional services agreement, for the next steps in this process. But with that said, I'll invite Greg Garfield and Steve Galbreth up to go through their slideshow and answer any questions, then after that, myself, Jason, and them are available for anything I might have to ask.
So, Andrew, on P3, is that professional?
Public-private partnership.
Is that what that is? That's one of our speakers, wanted to know exactly what that means.
Yes, public-private partnership, P3. Yes, ma'am.
The three Ps come from public-private partnership. Got it.
Thank you, Andrew. Hi, Mayor and Council, it's good to be here today. I'm Greg Garfield, President of Garfield Public Private. Steve Galbreth is with me, sitting over here. Steve is a partner in the company and our Chief Development Officer. He's an architect by background, actually, before he joined us for 22 years, he was with RTKL Architects, and for the last eight years, head of their hospitality division. So, a lot of experienced in, a lot of experience in mixed-use projects, convention center space, exhibit, meeting, ballroom space, et cetera, as is the, okay, just, just right click, okay. So, there's a bunch of slides here, I'm going to move through these with alacrity, but please, if I'm moving too fast, stop, ask questions, we'd love for this to be a dialogue. So, we are a national developer focusing only on public-private partnerships. It's all we've done since 1998, when we founded this company. We have done projects all over the country, we've got about a billion and a quarter that we've completed in public-private developments, and almost 300 million more in design or, and nearing a construction start. This will be kind of hard to see, but hopefully, it's easier to read in your, in your packets, and in fact, I'm going to open up my laptop here, so I can see it a little bit better. So, this slide here just shows our representative developments across the country, and so, we've done everything from K through 12 schools, to government office buildings, to headquarters, hotels, convention centers, event centers, performing arts centers. The similarity to all these developments being that they were essential public projects that needed some creative thinking on how to get them financed, how to get them funded, a creative deal structure, and they wanted the, the private sector delivery efficiencies of predictably on-time and on-budget delivery of high-quality projects.
We prefer under-budget, actually.
As do we. We've got several example, several examples of those that we have delivered, delivered ahead of schedule and under-budget. So, we've done stuff from coast to coast, we are very active in Texas right now, you'll see on this slide that we are in design on three hotels and convention centers in Abilene, Conroe, and Baytown. All of those will break ground in the next 60 to 120 days. And, and by the way, have developed three projects for Lubbock, Texas. The Overton Hotel and Conference Center was our first, still the only full-service hotel in, in Lubbock, and they're very proud of that, public-private partnership. That led to our being selected as the developer of the Buddy Holly Hall of Performing Arts and Sciences, which just opened up in January of this year, and we are in and Sciences, which just opened up in January of this year. And we are in design on the new Lubbock County Expo Center. So, we're happy to be moving north to Amarillo to hopefully create those kind of relationships here that we've had in Lubbock. Okay. This slide just has more of a focus on sports, entertainment, and performing arts. And three projects on here, completed developments. I mentioned the Buddy Holly Hall, which is our largest performing arts center to date. We also developed the Eccles Theater in Salt Lake City downtown, and the Durham Performing Arts Center. So, three of the most significant performing arts centers developed in the last decade, and all of them with very creative deal structures, and with components of public financing and private financing. But also, event centers on here and arenas as well. So, let me move through here to the next slide. The three performing arts centers I mentioned, shown across the top, the DPAC in Durham, Eccles Theater in Salt Lake City, and Buddy Holly Hall in Lubbock. And then on the bottom, the Huntington Center Arena in Toledo, Ohio, where we provided planning services on that project. In the middle, the Monroe Event Center and Headquarters Hotel, that we did strategic planning work for the city of Monroe on that. And Lubbock County Expo Center, an early rendering of that project. And we've got one slide here with a little bit more information on Buddy Holly Hall. Now, Buddy Holly Hall is kind of the exception to the rule when it comes to performing arts centers. Most performing arts centers have a pretty significant chunk of public financing and funding that's required in the project. Well, when we were hired back in 2012 to do the strategic plan for Buddy Holly Hall, we told them what the program should be, what it was going to cost, what the schedule would be to develop it, how they should, how they should approach it. And, and we looked at options about how it would be funded and financed. And the group that had hired us said, "We don't want the city involved. We're going to do it all ourselves. So, we're going to do it privately." So, we advised them, form a 501(c)(3), populate the board with people that can raise money in Lubbock, and people that can actually contribute money to the project. So, that 501(c)(3) board is called LIPA, and two of the members of the board are the, representing the two largest foundations in Lubbock. They made substantial starting contributions to the project, and then we helped them go about raising the additional money for the project. So, by the time we had completed the design of the project and had a guaranteed maximum price from the contractor, they had raised $93 million toward a $158 million project. And we helped them to put together a construction loan with a consortium of local banks that would fund the balance of the project. And they expect to have that construction loan paid off probably within five years of opening the project, just through additional private ongoing fundraising. So, but it's an amazing project. Love to give any of you a tour, if you have an opportunity to get down to Lubbock. Okay. Financing and funding discussion, this may be a little hard to read on the screen as well, but I talked a little bit about Buddy Holly Hall already. That's the, that's the column in the center. And in addition to the, to the private fundraising there, which included naming rights, philanthropy, sale of premium seating, box seating, as well as personal seat licenses, and grassroots fundraising, we also entered into partnerships with the Lubbock Independent School District, Texas Tech, and Ballet Lubbock. Ballet actually has a dedicated space within the building, about 22,000 square feet. And also, a partnership with United Supermarkets, where they are the provider of catering and concessions throughout the building. And they also operate a restaurant in the building called Ray Vaughan, after the Buddy Holly song, which is spectacular, the restaurant. And through all these partnerships, we were able to generate funds for the project. And with the inclusion of the school district and, and universities, we found in many communities that that can really help to supercharge your fundraising activities, because a lot of foundations want to contribute to projects that have an educational focus. On the left-hand side, we have the Durham Performing Arts Center, and on the right-hand side, we have Eccles Theater in Salt Lake City. I would say those are more the norm for these types of projects in terms of the splits between public and private funding. And they, they were both about 68% municipal bond-funded, and about 32% in private fundraising through naming rights. And by the way, that 32% private funding is just, was a snapshot at the time that we financed the project. So, we don't stop raising money and going out and, and trying to raise naming rights. And when an original naming rights contract expires, you have the opportunity to re-up that contract and create revenue down the road as well. But even in those cases where those are municipal bond-financed, those were not general obligation bonds, not backed by the full faith and credit of the, of the communities there. In the case of Durham, it was a, an increment of their citywide hotel occupancy tax that funded the majority of the certificates of participation that they used to finance that public piece. And in Salt Lake City, they used a incremental sales tax funds from a downtown TIF that was created. It was originally created to fund their basketball arena downtown, but they were about to pay off the bonds on their basketball arena. So, the city and the county got together and said, "Let's just extend the horizon of the collection of those incremental taxes, and we'll use it to fund this new performing arts center that they really needed downtown." So, all these projects have pretty creative solutions, and every community is different in the tools that it has available to it. I think the bullets are not showing up here on the screen, but this is a slide that just talks about facility operation. We know that your civic center is operated by the city, and we've met with Sherman Bass. He's very sharp, and I think he already knows where the potential sources of additional revenue might be to help reduce the subsidy on the convention center. But we have also worked with commercial operators nationally. And what we might want to do, and we'll talk to the city, the city-elected officials and the staff about this, is to maybe start a dialogue with one or two of the commercial operators nationally. ASM is one of them, formerly SMG. They're the operator of Buddy Holly Hall, and, and several other venues that we have worked with them on. And just to bring their perspective, to look at the work that's been done already, there's a lot of great work that's been done. We've reviewed four volumes worth of the master planning work that was done by the Decker Peric Savatini and Populous team. We're going to dig into that in, in great detail, but we might want to get a peer review by a national operator of venues to see what their thoughts are on priorities, you know, where the money would best be spent there, and what revenue opportunities there would be. Okay. So, just a few brief slides on the, on the approach to financing and funding, identifying as much upfront contribution. Obviously, we want to explore the market and see what the potential is for private philanthropy and naming rights, whether it's from wealthy individuals, or foundations, or corporations, and, and put together a menu of, of options, naming rights options in the venue, which could include not just the title of the building, but it can include, you know, significant spaces in the building. We create different price points where people can come in and participate by contributing naming rights funds to the project. And we will take a look at the operating pro forma for the venue, the activity profile, where the, I mentioned the revenue sources that we're going to be exploring with the convention center staff, and potentially with an outside operator, and see if there is the opportunity to finance anything that is recourse only to the projected annual revenue from the project, which could include naming rights and sponsorships. This next slide, let's see, just shows some examples of those potential revenue sources. Private fundraising, obviously, naming rights, sponsorships, sale of premium boxes and suites, personal seat licenses, obviously, tickets that are sold, and, and the building's share of that, as well as rent, ticketing rebates. I know the Civic Center already has a deal with a ticketing provider. Facility fees, Civic Center charges those as well. Food and beverage sales concessions, and, and taking a look at that and seeing if there are ways that we can optimize that, or increase the, you know, the margins potentially. But obviously, being sensitive to the needs of, of local tenants. So, we, we're always doing heavy stakeholder involvement from the outset, and talking to major tenants in the building, and make sure we're being sensitive to their needs, and, and taking into account their hopes for the project as well. So, parking fees and other revenue streams that are potential revenue streams here will be explored during this pre-development period. We kept one slide in here. This was for the Monroe Event Center and Headquarters Hotel, which was a strategic plan we conducted for the city of Monroe about a year or so ago. It has not moved forward yet, but it's a great plan. And the, the only thing we wanted to show on this slide is that we, we started, our team was engaged to look at doing an event center arena downtown. It would have been about a 7,000-seat venue. And as we did this stakeholder, I think we conducted maybe two dozen interviews with stakeholders downtown, every single one of them said, you know, "In addition to an arena, we really need a headquarters hotel. We need a full-service hotel downtown." In fact, they don't have any hotels in downtown Monroe. So, we actually added to our scope engaging a market consultant to explore the feasibility of a 200-room headquarters hotel, and, and found that it, there was a demand for it in Monroe. So, you'll see in the top image there, it was just the arena project. In the, in the middle image, it shows the addition of a headquarters hotel that would have been, been built on an adjacent piece of property. And as we studied it further, we said, "Let's create some economies of scale and efficiencies by building the hotel as part of the event center." So, actually integrating it into the footprint of the arena. And we're able to share a lot of spaces and bring the overall cost down, and the amount of, of city investment needed was, was brought down as well, while creating a greater economic impact for the city of Monroe. So, we'll bring that same kind of creativity, not just to the deal structuring and the financing, but in the design. Oh, these aren't showing up on the screen either. Okay. So, let me, let me talk through these real briefly. So, what we're talking about in Phase One is what we call a pre-development strategic plan. And we do this for every single development we do. You have to have a solid foundation. And something that the council, where they can understand, we have a blueprint for the project, how much it's going to cost, what it's going to be, what the benefits are, how much public investment is going to be needed, so that you can make an informed decision on whether to proceed into the design phase, when we start designing the project, and doing all the development activities, and ultimately constructing the project. So, you've got HBS, which is a great market consultant. We work with them a lot. We know they've done a study, as well as, as part of the overall master plan that was completed by the DPS group. So, we can work from that. And again, we will dig into and, and have discussions with HBS, as well as the civic center staff and the architectural team, to refine the scope of the project and the spatial program, to talk about priorities for the project. If we were to phase components, phase this development into components, what are the most important needs, and what should we focus on first? What's going to bring the greatest return on investment and the, and the quickest improvement of quality of life for the taxpayers of Amarillo? We produce a development budget and a schedule that's based on that program, and, and we can, we are very accustomed to breaking out, if we, if we are phasing this, you know, the, the arena in one phase, whether that comes first or second, convention center expansion or renovation, we'll break those out into columns, so you can see what each of those costs. And it's a complete comprehensive development budget, including all the construction costs and soft costs. And, and then we will create an operational and ownership business plan, work with the city and its finance staff, financial advisor, and bond counsel to explore the financing options for the public component of this, and, and bring back a, a complete plan of finance for the city's consideration. Development process is pretty straightforward, if and only if you give the green light to proceed to the design phase. We would then proceed with the, the fundraising and the financial structuring of the project. And by the way, we could start on the fundraising. We could be out there talking to those foundations and individuals and corporations in your community to start getting an early sense of their commitment, and whether they're willing to put naming rights into this project. We, I would like to start that during the, the Phase One strategic planning process. But that would all be papered during the development period, design period. If there is an operator selected, that would occur, and we would negotiate with them during this period. Obviously, engage the other development team members, architect, general contractor, et cetera, oversee design and construction, and open to public. And I don't know that we need to, this is, this, this slide's going to be too hard to see. All this, all this shows is, these are really complex projects, and so there's a lot of team members that are involved. And Garfield, as the developer, interfaces between the owner and all of those team members. And we help the city with the selection of all the team members, negotiating all the contracts. And we may have, you know, half of those team members may actually be subcontracted to Garfield Public Private, which reduces contractual exposure for the city and simplifies the administrative process. But then we would advise in the negotiation of the design agreement, the construction agreement, operating agreement, et cetera. And you think, okay. I'll stop there and just invite questions.
Just before we open it up to questions, I just, my name is Jason Herrick. As the mayor said, I worked with Andrew on the beginning of the committee. And I just want to clarify exactly what this is and what this isn't at this point in time. So, I agree with James and Tom, who spoke earlier. You know, the vote that was in November, to me, was very clear. If we want to do a project that looks like this, it cannot look like what we did. We have got to move the burdens off the property tax owners, or it's not going to be, it's not something the citizens of Amarillo want to do. So, so frankly, from the very beginning, our focus was really, how can we find somebody to come partner with us, where we can shift that burden and shift those costs over to the private market, and some of the risk can be taken off of the city of Amarillo? So, we have, as we went through this process that Andrew outlined, we were challenging these groups to come to us with creative solutions. And you, you saw some of these ideas for potential funding that's out there. That's really the key. We're, we're trying to get somebody that has an experience level, like Garfield, to come in, who has done these projects across the board, because Amarillo's not unique in this sense. We are not unique in the fact that we are trying to do projects, but we do not want to tap property taxes and burdens on our property tax owners. So, how can we do that? Well, we need to find strategic partners that can come answer those questions for us. So, where we are at this point in the process, we are not at a point where we're making a recommendation for going forward with anything that looks, has design elements to it, or even maybe even looks like the other part. What we are asking for is the ability to partner with somebody that has access to all these different ideas around revenue streaming, access to ways that we can improve our operations in order to make it more efficient, and potentially tap into those revenue sources. And then hopefully come back to you guys in five or six months with a proposal that says, "Hey, the capital stack looks different now. Maybe the phasing is completely different. Maybe we're tossing some of these pieces. Maybe we're not doing it at all, by the way." We're also challenging to say, "Hey, by the way, you may want to back into a number that says, 'Hey, you, you can't do everything you wanted to do. You need to do something less.'" So, all of those things at this point need to be explored. And the process that we went through was talking with several, a lot of qualified individuals, and Garfield really rose to the top as one to partner with, who has done a lot of these projects at different levels. So, I just wanted to add that that's a little bit where we are in the process, and I appreciate you guys going through the details of some of the qualifications that they have. And then we'll open it up to any questions at this point, I guess.
Yeah. Okay. Council, first of all, Greg, Stephen, welcome both of you to Amarillo. Very much appreciate that you're interested in looking at this project. And I know we're going to have a lot of questions. Jason, I think you did a great job there, just clarifying- Jason, I think you did a great job there, just clarifying what questions we're asking today and that we are just, I thought the commenter questions were good, because it is not about not listening to the voters. It is about what the voters said. So taking what they said and then moving forward with that is where we are right now in the process. So I'm just going to open it up, counsel. This is, we've slotted this to be a long item, so don't hold back on any of your questions, because we, this is, Greg and Stephen are here just for you to have the chance to ask your questions.
If I could say, I'm going to bring Jason along with me for all future presentations, because he was much more concise than I was.
Explain the, I know you do this for fun of it, but there's probably a cost. What do you charge the city if we hire you to do this?
So it depends on the project. In this case, what we have talked about, Steve, you've got the numbers. Come up here real quick, if you don't mind, because you've been crunching the numbers. Talk about the five-month and the two-month period.
Yes. So currently, we're looking at, you know, a four-phase kind of development plan. Phase One is broken into two pieces. Phase One A, which is about five months, and Phase One B, which is about a couple months. And it's really digging into the plan, considering the phasing, looking at current construction costs, pieces and elements of the buildings that we need, and then the timing of all that. And looking at all that, along with an operator, deciding, "Hey, is this actually the program that we need? This is the spaces that are needed by the users of the convention center or the arena?" And then going in and making some changes to the documents that you've seen, that there's been a lot of time spent on planning and architecture. So that's kind of the two phases. The first phase is about five months, and it's probably in order of magnitude of maybe $200,000. And that's a team member, that's legal fees, that's architects, that is development management time.
Market consultant, general contractor for updated pricing. So it's an entire budget of, we think, all of the components that we need to complete the report.
Yeah. The final two months are the team really making the big changes to designs and taking all the things that are coming out of the meetings with the operators, with the elected officials and staff, and documenting all that so we can kind of understand what this, this project's going to be. And so that, those couple months, that's a hard number to come up with, but it's more likely in the range of maybe $300,000 total. Much of that, probably about half of that, is architectural design drawings. So when we get to that point, then I think the group will be ready to consider engaging a construction firm or going out for an RFQ for a design-build contract.
So I'm going to take a cue from Jason here and be short. The short answer to your question, sir, is it's going to be about $500,000 for the pre-development period.
Thank you. I like the short answer.
Yes, sir. I'm learning.
Another question is, are you proposing to operate it, or just get it started and then we operate it?
Yeah, no, sir. We are not an operator. We are an advisor in facility operations, and so obviously, the Civic Center is operated right now by the city. Many cities operate their civic centers with their own staff, and we understand you have a very good staff. We have talked about exploring the possibility for the city's consideration of talking to some third-party operators. I mentioned ASM as one, Spectra is another. These are firms that operate hundreds of facilities nationally or internationally, and there may be reasons to consider engaging a third party to operate your civic center. And by the way, that doesn't mean that your civic center staff would not still be there. And we're helping a couple of cities right now transition their operations from city staff over to a commercial operator. And the commercial operator is taking on the staff that worked under the city when it was a city-operated venue, because they're great staff and they know the facility better than anybody else. And you bring in a commercial operator because there are opportunities for them to route business, okay? They have national sales calls where they're talking to touring concerts and comedy acts and family shows and Broadway shows. And so you have an opportunity to bring in potentially more commercial events and events that have a greater economic impact to the community. So I can't remember what the question was, because I was talking too long. But we are not an operator. We don't have an agenda as to whether the facility should be operated by the city or a commercial operator, but we will talk to the city and the city staff about what options are out there, and you will make the decision.
Thank you. Another question. The topic of parking came up, and you're probably aware, we have Elmore Sports Group, Hodge Town, and so many parking spaces are reserved within so many feet of Hodge Town. So it would be working and coordinating with Elmore Sports Group to come up with parking that in the city.
Yes, sir. We will explore that. We'll understand, we want to get all the due diligence, all the documentation, all the contracts from the city, so we can understand, you know, all of the operations, all the due diligence that's already gone into studying what can be done to improve the Civic Center. But it would include looking at those parking agreements and what the overall parking situation is and making recommendations on that.
That's all I have for now.
I've got another question. So we've been through, what, four iterations over the past 10 years, I think? I think I've got four.
Four different reports.
Four documents. So what happens to those four documents?
Well, that's not uncommon, by the way. I think in Lubbock, they had probably, I don't know, 10 studies that had been done over 25 years before we were engaged. So, you know, we'd like to see all the documents. I think the more current the document, the more relevant the information is going to be, but we do want to get all of that information and, you know, we want to capitalize on good ideas that may have, you know, been produced by these other reports. But we think what usually is different in the report that we provide is that it is a, it's a complete plan. It's not just a needs assessment. It's not just a market study. It's not just a, an architectural master plan. It's how do you, how do you fund it? How do you put the deal together? Who's going to own it? Is it going to be owned by the city or by a separate governmental entity that we set up just to own this facility? Is it going to be set up, is it going to be a 501(c)(3)? How is it going to be funded and how is it going to be financed? What are your options there? So it really is a complete blueprint. That's what we intend to provide.
Okay. That's really what I was looking for.
So essentially, it's a 100-yard dash, and you're going to use that so that you don't actually start at the blocks.
Well said.
Maybe we're going to start at the 25-yard line or the 50.
Exactly.
But we're not across the finish line yet, so.
Right.
We need a team to get us there.
So a couple of questions. I researched your firm. Fantastic, by the way. Like, you guys look great on paper, very professional, some really good-looking projects, architecture, the whole nine. So I say that to say you sound expensive. And I get the original 500K to get us through what I believe is seven months or so.
Yes, sir.
Is it an obligation to retain you moving forward from there and for Phase Two through Four, which, if I understood you correct, there, that's just Phase One? We would have a Two, Three, and Four. If so, how much would those phases be projected at for us to make a recommendation? If it's not obligated, then really, I think what we're being asked to do here is look at you at a 500K consulting fee.
Yeah, it's not obligated, and I think over the next five months, we're going to really understand what all those numbers are. Phase Two is design. Phase Three is construction, and Phase Four is opening. So it's really looking at those.
And honestly, I don't think we could give you a good number today of what the design phase commitment would be from the city. The majority of those costs would be architectural and engineering costs, because the architect and its team are generally earning about 80% of their fees during the design period and 20% during the construction period. But it would also include development fees, if Garfield is engaged as your developer, and other costs. But we don't, again, not knowing the scope of the project, the phasing, this report will include those figures, okay? Including the projections of the design period and the construction period and the fees, professional fees for all the team members.
Sure. But for now, we just have a flat fee of 500K to get us to a point where we'd be obligated to get through the report and everything at that time, do the study. So being part of the 62% that voted no, it's highly important to me that we announce that this is not, you know, something that we're looking at in the way of putting up another bond or asking for another total cost hold. And correct me if I'm speaking out of turn, because I don't speak for the whole council, but the way I'm understanding this at this point is, you guys are looking to put your money where your mouth is in the way of allowing private to come in and to do the heavy lifting. And that this would then be looked at upon our community as, okay, now we get these amenities, now we get these entertainment values, and I don't have to pay for that through my property taxes. I would love to pay for that when I buy a beer or when I buy a ticket. And am I correct in understanding that? And is that the way the council is promoting this?
It's a good, high-level, basic summary.
Yes.
Of my understanding. Y'all are the ones that do it.
Yes.
Nationwide.
Well, let me put it this way. None of the projects that we have done since the founding of our company back in 1998 have used general obligation bond financing or relied on property taxes. They've all been other mechanisms. Does that mean that that's, you know, that's the city's, that's the city's decision? But yes, we're going to be looking for every private dollar that we can get committed to this project, every revenue source that is related to the project. And a lot of communities that have convention center projects or headquarter hotel projects, well, Lubbock County Expo Center is a good example, the one I mentioned. We're in design on that right now. They had a countywide vote on a venue tax, which was a small increase in their countywide hotel occupancy tax collections and the imposition of a tax on rental cars in the community, which falls on visitors to the community, not on, and by the way, when you can, you know, capture those revenue sources, you don't have to rely as much on residential property taxes. So we're going to be looking at creative ways like that to create revenue streams for the project so that we don't have to, the city does not have to use general obligation bonds, property taxes.
So let me ask if I can, as an idea or a thought, and I appreciate Jason Herrick and Andrew and giving their time and really running, you know, with the torch on this You know, not to hang you out there where you would need to continue on. I know that that was a scouting committee, and so you've kind of fulfilled your obligation. But one of the worst things I think you can do in construction is maybe just turn an architect loose and not have him talk to the owner the whole time. And so continued input from our citizens and from our community. Would we be in favor of looking at maybe each council person and the mayor nominating a citizen to form a committee that could walk with you through this? And would that be helpful to you to have some citizen involvement, you know, as you're helping to come up with this design and look at what our community needs are?
I, we would welcome that. I think that would, that would be great. I mean, in fact, in some communities, we have public charrettes, and we could even arrange a public charrette and presentation to solicit feedback on the design, or a committee like the one you're describing, where we can schedule a charrette or...
And I think, you know, Cole, the way we did this two years ago, not only did we have a committee, but we had public charrettes. We had charrettes with people who are currently users at the Civic Center. We had charrettes with people that we would hope to be users at the Civic Center. We had charrettes, I know Mr. Skank came to a charrette that was public. There were 80 people at that one that were citizens. The whole city was invited. So absolutely, this will be as many people at the table as we can get and come around, because you guys can't know what to design. Yes, we can go and study the economic data where we're not competitive, what types of events and programming we can be competitive for. That will drive some of the design. But a lot of what's going to drive the design, this is our backyard, it's our city. What do we want as community members? And so we absolutely want that input, and we'll get to that point. We did that a couple of years ago when we had, and we may go back to that committee, because again, we may find that there's benefit to not coming straight out of the blocks. That committee has 18 months of studying this, but it might also be good to bring some new voices around the table to look at it with fresh eyes. So I think that's an excellent question, and I would anticipate that as a council, we're going to steer toward something like that. We'll put the specifics to it as we move along.
And we have, the process the mayor just described is very similar to what we did in Salt Lake City for the Eccles Theater. We developed downtown, and there was a steering committee created. It was populated by the city and the county. We had multiple charrettes and stakeholder, individual stakeholder interviews, and all of that information was considered in the design of the project. So we want this all, our reputation is based on transparency and making sure the community is along with the decisions that are made, okay? They know what's going on, their input is solicited and incorporated into the project. That's what we've got a reputation for doing, and that's what we plan to do here.
So my last question, just to manage my expectations so I don't get too excited. Do you, what percentage of projects have you designed that are totally funded by the private sector, that don't have any, let me say, property tax or any kind of tax increase if we weren't willing to do a hot tax increase, which I don't even know if we can, but...
Well, that's a tough question. The 100% pri-
Can't, by the way.
Sorry?
We can't.
We cannot, yeah.
Yeah.
So whatever our option would be, if it was, do you have any that are totally privately funded?
The Buddy Holly Hall.
Okay.
Which I mentioned was kind of an aberration. I mean, for Lubbock to raise 150, for any community to raise $158 million to fund a project of, that's as big and beautiful as Buddy Holly Hall is an impressive accomplishment, but even more so in Lubbock. So that is kind of the exception, not the norm. I mentioned, none of our projects have geo-bond financing or property taxes backing the project. I'd be happy to follow up with you, if you like, with sort of a summary of all of our projects and what percentages of, and what instruments were used to finance those, so you can get an idea of that.
I would love that.
Great.
So if I can get educated on that. And then I really appreciate you two and your time involved so far, and also Mr. Herrick. I know he's got a few hours in this deal.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mayor Protan Powell, do you have any follow-up questions on that?
I do not.
I've got a couple of questions, and guys, I'll, this is more addressed to Andrew and Jason, but hang tight in case we come back to you. Jason, why would you bring us, as you guys have moved through this process, essentially, we said, "Go out and turn over every single rock you possibly can to look for a different way to fund a project like this." And you said you had four different proposals. So why are we, as a council, not hearing from four different companies?
Yes, great, great point. So we actually probably interviewed about six different ones, and we had four that responded to our written concept request. From that point, we did form a citizens committee along with staff. There were eight other citizens on that. We tried to have an architect and a builder and a, someone from the bank and some other folks just to kind of help sit into that, plus several of the city staff. And we did do interviews specifically with three of those. One withdrew from the project just because they had a lot of other stuff that was, they were committed to. So we have tried to get down to where we have, are presenting you with an option that we think is the best fit for Amarillo, that is the most professional group that we could find, that had been vetted by the city staff on their history and background, and that can move quickly and efficiently for the next steps. So that would be our, we probably, some of our process was a little bit on the front end to try to get down to a recommendation for you guys to move forward with, for partner.
I'm wondering, too, I mean, these guys have asked great questions from this end of the table as far as how this, how you get paid in all of this. And you did a great job, I think, answering, Cole did a great job of coming to, well, it's a $500,000 commitment to start. But obviously, you get, you have a financial stake in this. It's the way you make your living, or else, you know, I'm sure you have great hearts, but you're not just doing it for the good of your heart. So I know that there is a profit in this for you, and it's hard to say what that bottom line is until we tell you, sort of like going to the car dealer and saying, "Well, am I going to pick this..." going to pick this car with these options or this car with these options? It sort of all depends on what we tell you we want as a city in our facility. Am I interpreting that right, Greg?
Yes, that's exactly right. We will structure our fee proposal based on the scope of services that we develop, and our scope of services is tailored to what you need. And then the fees that we propose are market-based, and we, you know, welcome you to go out and explore, to make sure they're market-based, but we, you know, provide and everything is fully disclosed so that, you know, you can see what the proposal is. But it's based on a scope of services and, you know, the anticipated workload for our company to perform the services.
You know, I'm a lawyer in my non-maritime, and I do estate planning. So when people, when a family comes to me, and there's some create, there's some art to creating an estate plan. When they come to me and they tell me, I want to fund college for my grandkids, and I have a cabin in New Mexico, and they list out all their unique things, then I develop a plan that's suited uniquely to that family. And I would be very upset after having done all of that work, and they look at that plan, and even sometimes I'll send them a draft, I would be really upset if they just typed up what I developed for them and signed it without coming back to my office and using my plan and paying my fee to do it. And so I'm sort of sensing that there's some proprietary effort on your part in even starting Phase One, because as you begin, like when I do an estate plan and I begin to move the pieces around to meet their goal, I'm already developing the art, I'm lawyering my product for them, even from day one. And I'm sensing, maybe even, Jason, this might be part of why it was best to only bring one company, is because you have proprietary art in creating how it's structured from the get-go. So I guess I just want us to understand why we're not letting four people pitch us and why we're narrowing it. Yes, it's very efficient, but how do we bring that to the city's bottom line to show we're getting the best deal?
Yeah, I don't know if that's a question for Jason or for-
Well, yeah, let me say this, I think this a little bit addresses it. There is only so far that we could get to this point. So really, the answers that we need now require a much greater commitment of time and effort to get to that answer. So the answer that we want as a community right now is what projects can be done and how can they be financed? And frankly, as Greg mentioned, that's very different between all the communities. And so all the groups, we could kind of get to the point here where we think this is the best partner to go forward with, but to get to that next step, to have a legitimate thing to talk about, to talk about whether that's a good revenue source to go do that, whether that's a true option, what that will look like, or if it's even possible, by the way, that takes a much greater commitment from these guys, from us, because now we really have to get into the answers of that to provide a really a true answer or solution to it.
Like if a client came to me and said, I'm interviewing four lawyers to do my estate plan. I'd like you to go ahead and develop the plan and draft the document, and then I'm only going to pick one of the four. After you've done all the work, there's a 75% chance that I'm not going to pick you. And I would say to that client, blessings, you go on down the road, I can't invest that kind of time not knowing that I'm going to get reimbursed for it. So is that a good analogy of where we are?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to show that we give good value, and it's not just in the seven months, but in the years of construction where we're creatively solving issues in the field every day because we'll have our people here. I think you're going to see that. And so we earn fee, not just in this small piece in the front, you know, this five months, but, you know, over the 30 months of a construction job or whatever it is, we're there solving problems every day. So I think we will show that to you guys, and you'll appreciate that.
And I would add, what we said before is absolutely true. We're talking about a Phase One here, and we sure hope there's a Phase Two. We hope, you know, we come back with a plan that's acceptable to the community, that's acceptable to the council, and you say, yes, we want to proceed into design. But you also have the right to say, no, we're not ready to move forward with this at this time, thank you very much. There'll be no, you know, further commitment to Garfield. But we are going to propose in the pre-development agreement that we're going to draft, that we're going to be sending to the city, that during the seven-month period, we're negotiating in good faith a professional services agreement to carry us as the developer, assuming you decide to proceed to Phase Two, that would carry us through the rest of the project. So, but we don't, you're not committed to entering into that agreement unless you say, yeah, we're going to move forward with this project.
And I would want us to do that in good faith as well. Yeah, do you have a question, Councilmember Smith?
Yes, and so I like your line of thinking in the way of, do we own anything? And so where I think we're getting to is, are we going to make a recommendation on a $500,000 spend to not own the plans that we may have? And so if you guys were comfortable coming back saying, we're going to pitch you the best plan we got, and if you don't want to move forward with us, then, you know, it's not proprietary that we don't own the plan, but there may be some aspects of what you've done that you wanted to retain. And now, could we get that broken out? Is it that black and white, or is it the opposite, where you own everything, we spend the 500K, but really moving forward from there, we don't have much if we don't go?
You will own the product of the work that we are performing. I believe, we've got our legal team drafting the document right now, but what we have done in some communities is to say, if you, if you use this work product within a year or two years, you say, okay, we don't want to move forward with this project right now, you own the work product. But if you restart the project within a year or two years, you need to come back to Garfield because we feel like we have invested a lot of, you know, time and commitment and intellectual property into what's been produced, and use us as the developer. But we've got to obviously get to agreement on reasonable terms for that professional services agreement or development agreement, but you'll own the work product.
That's a great answer. And so am I, if I can ask the council, are we being asked to make recommended steps here today? Or would now be a good time to just request this additional information so we could review that before we would make those recommendations?
Today, you are just being asked to get all of the information you need. We're not taking any action on this. I suspect that it will be on the next meeting agenda as an action item, but you have the experts in the room today to ask for any follow-up information or any data slides that you want to see.
Specifically, if we could get that information for the council that you had offered to me to help educate me on what it is and the way in which you function, also in which anything that you would retain or any kind of a non-comp, so to speak, for so many years, and any of those legal docs, I think, would put us in a much better position to move forward.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You bet.
And Mayor, I would like to see the information on the Buddy Holly Center in Lubbock, since it was the one that was fully 100% funded by private donations.
And I will provide you, ma'am, with as much information as I can, but that is a privately owned, it's a private 501(c)(3), so they, you know, probably have a lot of information that is confidential and proprietary, and I have to protect that, just as I would protect the City of Amarillo's interests.
Right, I certainly understand that, but whatever information can be shared would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So let's talk again about timeframe. Let's suppose that this is on our agenda two weeks from now as an action item. Let's hypothetically set out that the council votes to hire your firm to enter into 1A of Phase One. That takes five months. And talk again specifically about what happens in those five months.
You want to take that?
Yeah, let me just, I've got some notes here, in case I was asked that specific So Phase 1A, we've got it together, Phase 1A and Phase 1B, but Phase 1A is really digging into the studies that you talked about. They're not getting thrown away. Those are detailed information, all the options and plans and et cetera. Working with the city to negotiate with the design team and a contractor, start figuring out who those people are going to be.
So we start having charrettes?
So I think-
City on design?
Pretty soon, but I think the first month or so is really investigating what's going on, and then we can say, okay, as we're talking with an operator, we think that maybe this suggestion that was made in one of the four volumes to make a ballroom X size, we really think it ought to be this size. So that's when the architects start getting involved and figuring out how does that fit into a plan. You know, work with the city to engage an operator, even if it's just for technical services. Right now, we're not talking about engaging an operator to operate it, we're talking about somebody from outside to just help us look at it with a fresh set of eyes.
And talk about what kind of market opportunities we might not currently be moving across the finish line, like, are there things out there that either we can't get related to our outdated design, or we could be getting, but for whatever reason, we don't know about it, or we don't have the connection currently in place to get that?
Yep, and how to work commercial in with community and amateur athletics and all the athletic side, there's all those things to look at. So that operator will help us, along with Sherman and his team, will produce a feasibility and market study that we'll really look at. And at that point, we then also start engaging our bankers that look at how we would conceptualize some of our capital stack, as was mentioned before, and all the time working with the city's financial advisor and your bond counsel.
Yeah, and so maybe in a, maybe I can briefly summarize it, the components. It's either an update to the HVS market study or an operating pro forma and activity profile that is produced in collaboration with Sherman and his team and possibly outside review by a third-party operator. So market study or operating pro forma. Updated building program, updated design concept that is informed and will plan on having a community charrette and meetings with stakeholders. An updated development budget that's broken down in those components, like I mentioned before, so you can say, okay, we think this component is a priority, so if we looked at funding that first, here's how we would do it. And then it's the financing options, which would include a narrative of the different, you know, ownership and governance options for the facilities and what instruments may be used to finance them, whether those are, you know, revenue bonds of some kind, but not general obligation bonds, and the, just the entire capital stack of public and private sources.
You kind of, we kind of mixed a couple of things, just to make sure everybody understands. So the first five months is kind of figuring out what we're doing, and then the last two months is documenting that in the budget, the schedule, the design drawings, and, you know, working with the contractors, saying, this is what it is. All this is to be done, whatever we end up doing, we're going to do with a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price.
Okay. So this will all be clear, all this scope and everything we're doing will be, instead of us, you know, extemporizing here, will be very clear in a document that'll come back to you for your consideration for a pre-development services agreement and the sequence.
Council, do y'all have any follow-up questions for the Garfield team?
I don't have one for them. I just kind of have one, I guess, for city manager. Where does the half a million dollars come from?
Oh, we've got Laura, she can answer that question for you, but we would use, we could use a number of funding sources potentially, but we would have to potentially just primarily find savings on other projects or reallocate, reprioritize some of our project funding right now.
And along with that agreement, there'll be a, kind of a draw schedule over the seven months showing what's spent monthly. It's not all spent, obviously, in day one, very heavily towards the end, actually. So the first $200,000 is over the first five months, and then that last piece.
Which means it could probably land in next year's budget, is that what you're leaning toward?
So we could budget, that makes it a lot easier than trying to find funds inside our current fiscal year, so that does make a difference. I know my answer sounded a little bit flat-footed because it was.
So I quickly tried to relocate some money. No, one thing, just to remind council, and you'll have it on a future agenda item, your hot tax collections are coming in much stronger this year. This is, and this would be a project that would be eligible to use some of those resources. So that is encouraging. We budgeted very conservatively this year, not knowing what the pandemic was exactly going to do, so we're highly exceeding those budget revenues at this point in time. So we could potentially use some of those excess collections in the current year to fund something like this, to get it started, and then budget it into next year, the remaining portions of it, or the next phase, or the next part of this phase. And we're right in the middle of budget, and so this is pretty good timing.
So truly, this could end up not costing the taxpayer-
That is correct.
-to get this portion of it done-
That is correct.
-by using hot tax, which does not come from the taxpayer's pocket.
Comes from out-of-town visitors.
Yes, and for the acronym purposes, hotel occupancy taxes, so it would be only those people that are staying in hotels and paying that tax inside the city limits, those revenues would be going to fund something like this.
And just to bring us all on the same page, Laura.
Yes.
HOT, we can't change the rate.
No.
That, we are maxed on that, and that is controlled mostly out of Austin, but our revenue on HOT varies just depending on how many people stay in a hotel in the city over the course of our fiscal year.
That is correct, along with those average daily rates, which we saw those plummet during COVID. We have seen a full recovery, actually, they're up above pre-COVID average daily rates, and the occupancy rates are actually above the pre-COVID numbers, so going back to fiscal year 1819. So I'm stealing some of Debbie's thunder in her presentation.
I know you are, but I think it's very good to clarify that because just any of us who have forgotten how that works, we can't change the rate of the hotel occupancy tax because we are already maxed-
That's correct.
...on it. But our revenue from it varies every year depending on how much volume we have and our room rates, which the market drives-
Yes, that is correct.
-from our local hoteliers.
And just as a reminder, and again, it'll be in the presentation, we are maxed at a 7% local hotel occupancy tax. Our Emerald Potter Events Venue District also has a 2% hotel occupancy tax on top of that. That goes to their purposes, not to the City of Amarillo, and then the state has a 6% hotel occupancy tax. So yes, we are maxed out. Very good questions, though, and our venue district is also maxed out as well.
But the increased revenue that we anticipate, both from volume and rate-
Yes.
-of our strong first quarter of 2021-
Yes.
-in our hotels is something that we're excited about and potentially then could land in the next budget cycle to fund this out of hotel occupancy tax.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And we can start looking at those numbers.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions? Yes, Councilmember Smith.
What, if anything, would be the part that the city council would do during this first five months?
Andrew, will you speak to that, just having been involved in the prior, I think it will be similar-
As far as engagement, stakeholder engagement, yes, it'll be participating in those meetings to continue to give feedback throughout the process, just like with the citizens through that pre-development phase.
So the council has a subcommittee right now of Councilmember Smith and myself that are working on the Civic Center project, but we could get updates anytime by putting it on the agenda so that all five of us could have a conversation about it, could ask questions.
And the public meetings would be quorum notices posted, so you could all attend.
Yes, all five of us would be able to attend those public meetings. Anytime we want to post notice so that all five of us could attend an update, or anytime your team is in town to the Garfield team, the five of us could, with a posting, be a part of those meetings. But I would anticipate a lot of it to happen in our subcommittee as far as some of the nitty-gritty kind of stuff, then we would come back for council input and approval on any steps to move forward. But as far as public charrettes and all of that, council absolutely is a vital part of that process. Any other final comments or questions or... Mr. Herrick, any final comments? Okay, I will say thank you to Andrew and Jason. They have spent a lot of time- Okay. I will say thank you to Andrew and Jason. They have spent a lot of time researching, learning, teaching themselves about what a PPP approach might look like for this project. A lot of time on the phone, a lot of time engaging relationships, and trying to learn about who, who's the expert in the field, who's doing the projects well. So I do know that you've done a great job scouting this for us, and I appreciate your time here today in a lengthy presentation. Jason, you're not off the hook. I'm sure there's another ask coming at some point on this, so. Okay. And to the Garfield team, thank you for traveling to Amarillo and being here with us today.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah. Okay, counsel, at this point, we're going to take a pause, take a bathroom break. And so take your five minutes, and let's meet back up here on the dais to keep churning through our work today. After a little break? No, you're good. You're fine. The city manager mentioned to me a moment ago, and I wish Mr. Skank was still here. There was a question in public address about the city hall project, and, you know, was it part of the Civic Center that was on the ballot in November? And I think it would be a great opportunity just to clarify that, that the, the city hall, Amarillo Hardware, was not on the ballot. So just confirm and clarify that for people at home that are watching. Hopefully, Mr. Skank will go back and watch the rest of this meeting.
Right. The, the project that we proposed, that was, the, the total project that we proposed was a mix of funding sources. So it was a total project of $319 million, which would have renovated and expanded our existing Civic Center, would have built the new arena, would have renovated an existing facility that we have as city hall, and would have demolished the current city hall and built some green space here. Now, that's the total project. That included both general obligation bonds and certificates of obligation. The general obligation bonds, the GO, the $275 million, would have renovated and expanded the Civic Center, would have built the arena. The COs, and also some utility funds, would have been used to round out that $319 million to build the city hall, and to do some utility modifications and parking, I'm sorry, and some utility modifications to facilitate the project. So the city hall, while a component of a larger project, was not a component of the general obligation bond election. So just for clarity's sake, and there's a couple of reasons why city hall was not part of the general obligation bond election. One, bond counsel did not recommend that we put the city hall in with a Civic Center project for a bond election. If we wanted to do it as a GO component of a bond election, then it could have been listed as a second initiative. The other reason why it was not included in the project, and out of prudence, it would have been short-sighted for council to put the city hall on a general obligation bond election, knowing that we have significant challenges with the facility that would have prevented us addressing those challenges for at least three years. So there's a number of reasons why the city hall was never part of the general obligation bond election. And, but I think that, hopefully that explains
Yeah.
-the, the nuances of how that project worked. And because of the failed general obligation bond election, it would. We would do not, would not have the ability to issue certificates of obligation for the same project to do the Civic Center renovation, expansion, and new arena.
Yeah, good explanation. And, and I appreciate that you used the word nuances. It's a complic- it's complicated. And so I appreciate citizens who are willing to engage and stay engaged and, and learn about it. So I appreciated the question from the podium, and thanks for that explanation.
It's understandable that someone might not have understood that.
Yeah. Any questions from council about that? Okay, great. Let's move on then and do item 1D, which is related to the presentation that we just saw. As I sat in on one of those meetings, there were questions about, well, are there potential revenue sources from the Civic Center that we might need to look at right now, just to improve the cost recovery that we have from operating it? When we operate it, we subsidize it with taxpayer dollars, just to keep the doors open right now. What I would hope, in a renewed facility, or renovated, or an updated or expanded facility, is that we would be more competitive in the market in the types of uses that we would attract, and that we would not have to support it. We wouldn't have to subsidize it as much. But, so that's where this agenda item came from. What could we be doing now that would improve the revenue at the Civic Center? Mr. City Manager?
I think the, the part of that question is also, if we could do something at the Civic Center to, to bring in more revenue, why are we not doing it now? And I think that's a very conscious decision that the community and councils have made over the decades, to provide a level of service and a level of access for our nonprofits, for our community, for our schools, for different events that happen on our Civic Center, at a subsidized cost. The, what we're talking about now is adopting more of a best practice, nationwide best practice, which would be actually charging the cost of space to all users. So we've got Sherman Bass runs all the operations over at the Civic Center, going to give us a, a presentation on it. Sherman?
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you, council and mayor, for this opportunity to visit with you a little bit. I'll be brief as I can, and certainly open for questions. Here to talk about potential revenue sources for the Civic Center complex. I have one slide. It's five, there they are, five potential ideas that we are not currently looking at those revenue opportunities, that I believe we should be looking at, either now or in the near future, to reduce our subsidy, which is provided by the hotel occupancy tax, and increase our net bottom line. The first of the five ideas is a catering commission. The, in our best practices in our, our field, we see buildings that have open catering, which is what we have. We see buildings that have in-house contracted catering, and we see buildings that have their own catering departments. And the open catering is not an issue to continue in our community, but without collecting commissions, we're missing on a, a major revenue opportunity. In lieu of contracting with someone that then would pay us commissions, keeping it as open catering, which means your lessee can pick any caterer they want, as long as they're licensed to cater offsite, they can cater. And that's, that's a benefit, especially for our community events, but it's also a benefit for regional statewide conventions. We have conventions that come to Amarillo maybe once every four years, because they're rotating their, the cycle of which area of Texas they visit. They like using the same caterer every time they meet, whether they're in San Antonio, or Dallas, or El Paso, or Amarillo. So that would probably be about a 15% commission, and I estimate that could generate anywhere from $100,000 to $150,000 a year. We don't know exactly, because we don't see the catering invoices that our lessees see, because we're not currently charging a commission. But based on some generalized numbers, and how many meal functions we have, what types they are, whether they're breakfast, lunches, break times, or, or fundraising banquets, et cetera, I put together a pretty conservative estimate there at 100,000 to 150,000. The second item is a preferred audio/video provider, or commission from, from that provider. We again have open AV. As a lessee, you can bring anyone into the facility you'd like to, to provide your AV, whether that's simple PowerPoint screens, or large screens with, with rear projection, with lights, with cameras, et cetera. And there are a couple of firms here in Amarillo. One provides most of those, but they're certainly not contracted through the city to do so. I'm not suggesting we contract with one. I'm suggesting we would keep it open, but again, that we'd see a commission based on their sales, which, whatever company comes into the building. And again, I'm estimating that to be about 10% to 15% commission. And then, again, I don't see the AV bills, but I think a very low-bolt estimate would be about 50,000 in additional revenue. The next item on the list is parking fees. Back in 2011, when the downtown development really started going, and the original pro forma was done for parking, it took into account both the surface parking and the street parking, all the above. And I've looked over those numbers, that, again, they're 10 years old, and there's certainly a different dynamic today. It depends on, we wouldn't do it 24/7. We'd do it based on demand, when, when we feel like the parking lots that the city has control over are in that demand. And it would depend a little bit about timing. As was mentioned earlier, there, there's an agreement with the sod poodles to allow that group to sell parking on our two largest surface lots during some of their events. So, but again, I think 100,000 to 150,000 dollar estimate on an annual basis is a fairly conservative one. It really, it would depend on that timing, how many overlap with an event that the other provider might be using it. The next item on the list is in-house versus contracted concessions. We currently have a contracted concessionaire, of which we do receive a percentage of their sales. An option that, certainly the developers kind of alluded to it, if a private management company were, were to come in, but it's certainly open to us, is bring that operation in-house. So the city is actually operating concessions, and we conservatively estimate that that would generate about $220,000 in additional revenue. And finally, sales staff. It was one, all of these were deficiencies noted since the beginning of the needs assessment, but it is one that we, kind of goes hand in hand with the, with the recommendations from the needs assessment that were part of the Conversation Civic Center Plan. The sales staff is really there to sell inside of two years the convention center, the meeting space, the banquet space, the exhibit space. And in five and a half decades, we have never had a sales staff at the Civic Center. The Convention and Visitors Bureau handles long-term sales, two years out. They know they have the calendar. They, they can know they can make offers for conventions and meetings. They certainly supplement that with inside of two years, but we do not have a sales staff going and marketing the Civic Center for banquets, for weddings, for receptions, for anniversaries, for reunions, all, all those types of events that may or may not choose the Civic Center, may not think of the Civic Center as being an option for their events. Do not have any idea how that would look in Amarillo, certainly in larger markets that have a lot of competition amongst venues. It's, it's a tight business, and, and a lot of folks are investing a lot in those sales staffs. But I think with a minimum, minimal investment of sales staff, we could at least break even, break even in a, an unlimited potential, depending on how many folks we could convince to come to the Civic Center for their local events. So those are the five items I'm, I'm bringing to your attention. And we're not asking for action from council. We have the ability to implement any or all of these as part of the budget process. I will mention that, that the concessions would be at least one year out. I think the earliest we'd be looking at is September of '22, and it would require a, a capital investment, which we have funds available in our Civic Center, available through the hotel occupancy tax, excuse me. I think the sales staff would be at least a year out, unless we did a mid-year budget change in the next fiscal year. I, I don't think we're prepared to get it done fast enough to trigger October 1. Parking in our surface lots could begin as early as October 1. Both the catering and the AV commission, I think the earliest we'd see is probably January 1. We certainly want to be respectful of our existing lessees and clients, give them notification. And although it would probably be triggered with, with the revenue budget that would come before you as part of the budget process for October 1, we're, we're already contracting for events this fall. So I, I think to be fair and transparent, we'd, we'd be looking at that being implemented about January.
Counsel's question? I'm sorry, questions, counsel?
What are other cities our size doing?
I don't know any that don't at least charge a commission on catering. I think it varies on parking, depending on how much they have at their facility, and how much is in their control. AV, I think is probably the most varied, on whether there's no commission, or whether there's a commission. Concessions is probably about 50/50 on how many are in-house, or, or by the management company operating the venue, and how many are contracted. And sales staff, it's probably about 50/50 that are still on, out there without a sales staff versus those that have incorporated a sales staff.
You may not can answer this, but how many events would you lose if we did this?
You know, I can't answer that. There, there certainly may be some events that feel like that would be too much in additional costs. And without knowing for sure, and, and implementing this and talking through it with them, I would certainly, if we decided to implement this, work with some of our bigger clients to make sure they had ample notice, so they could budget for it. And, you know, the, the one thing that we don't do a lot of, and part of it is because we don't have an in-house sales team, and part of it is because of our concessions agreement, but we don't do a lot of reception business, whether it's, again, weddings, or anniversaries, or reunions. And that is because of our policies requiring beer and wine and alcohol to come through the contracted concessionaire. They too are in, in this business to provide a service, but to make money at the end, and that's where they make money. So we'd have the same issue if the city was operating it. If the idea is to try to increase our bottom line, so that the, there's not a deficit that the hotel occupancy tax supports, then we need to look at these fees. And ultimately, in the long term, if the city chose in the future to go with a private management company, I can assure you the contract is going to want all of these things.
That's all I have.
Great questions. So I have concerns about, like, community events, nonprofit events. They, they run on a tight budget. They're trying to raise dollars to support, you know, service projects that are happening in the city, that coordinate with their missions. And now we're adding some percentage cost on top of, so we're taking that money directly out of a nonprofit or a charity. So that, I want to just be very open about that's, that's, it won't happen that way on every event, but there are a lot of events that are charity-related, and this will increase the cost of, of doing those events. But what I hear, like, from a no vote from our voters in November, is that we must look at other ways to generate revenue that property taxpayers are saying, let the people that use the facility pay for the facility. And this is what that looks like. So I don't want our nonprofits or our charities to be surprised by a change like this. And I think communication, if we were to do something along these lines, communication with them would be very, very important, because they're putting budgets together 12 months ahead of time, and they would need a chance to adjust and anticipate an increase of costs to putting their events on.
Certainly.
But I will say philosophically, I really like the idea that the person that's using the city service is paying for the city service. And I think that is a good trend for us to financially, as a council, to move toward, that, you know, if you like playing golf in the city, you're paying for the service of golf in our city. We're subsidizing it a little bit, but for the most part, the person who's using the service is the person who's paying for the service. I think that's a good financial, it's sustainable. I think that's a good approach. What do y'all think?
Kind of interested in the whole idea of best practices. I think we've been spending the past four years, that most of us have been sitting on the council, we keep looking at different parts of the city, and we keep having to reevaluate what are best practices, and we keep finding out, oh, we're five, we're 10, we're 15, we're 20 years behind what the rest of the world is doing. And so I think this is, again, one of those sources where we need to be looking at what best practices are. And to your point, Mayor, is the fact that it's, it's basically the people that use them need to be helping to see that those services are paid for. So I, I'm gonna, it's the same way, whenever we first walked in and we had the whole deal about having to deal with golf, and how it hadn't been touched in, what was it, 10 or 15 years, that the, they hadn't even looked at the fees. And so I think this, Sherman, I think this looks exactly the same, honestly, it looks the same way as golf. There, there's all of these fees that, that should, that are naturally occurring, that should be taken care of by the people that are using them. And I think that that is, I, I think it's, we, we need to be looking at, at that. I think it's important.
I'd also like to add, you asked, staff had asked me to prepare the- I'd also like to add, you asked, staff had asked me to prepare these revenue ideas. I, let me tell you, I did not, not look at expenses and where we can cut. Our two largest expenses for the civic center complex are personnel and utilities. And we have learned the hard way over the past year and a half, how to manage personnel vacancies and try to keep things down as much as we possibly can during the COVID pandemic. And utilities, they are what they are, unless we're going to raise the temperature, make it colder in the winter and warmer in the summer during our events. We're at the mercy of what the utility companies pay us. We do our best to manage during move-ins, wide-open overhead doors, those kind of things. But ultimately, we're in a tight situation there. And lastly, I would like to say, in general, for the revenue for the civic center, we operate in a very cyclical environment. And so every year, we budget more than we might need in expenses and under what we might need in revenue, not knowing what we'll book that year. And one major family show can produce $50,000 in revenue. So if that comes twice a year, that's $100,000 off the year it didn't come at all. And just, even a symphony, a smaller symphony performance in concessions generates about $1,000 pre-COVID. Since they've come back live, they've done shorter performances and left intermission out, they generate about 300. So it's a, it's a significant difference in how many people in the facility, how long the event's going on, how many times those events come per year. And ultimately, we've, we've looked at all of it.
So utility-wise, though, remind me, we have changed to LED lighting in the facility, correct?
We have.
And that's a, that's a big expense.
And I don't have those numbers in front of me. I believe it was a 60% cost savings. We had projected paying for it over three years. But again, when all of the utilities are combined and they continue to increase, it's, it's hard to track exactly what that was. Even during COVID, we had the ICN this year, even though we were closed for two months. And we did allow the Bulls to practice and to play without spectators there, but those expenses are still there, even though we didn't have revenue offsetting them. So it's been a challenge the past 18 months.
Questions on the right side? No? Okay, just, anybody have concerns or think, just thinking forward that we want to put those questions in front of Sherman of why this would be a terrible idea? Howard?
Oh, well, a question, sort of.
Okay.
The city uses the civic center a lot. So would we be charging that department that uses it?
That's a great question.
I don't know that we have an answer to that yet. I can tell you that, I have that in my notes here. I believe we average about 100,000 in unearned or missed revenue, but most of that is for interdepartmental events, not for commercial-type events. So large trainings, when city council moves due to a pandemic or for whatever reason, those, those kind of events. Departments, annual awards banquets. There, there are very few events out there that would actually be commercial events. So ultimately, that would be a decision on management. It would certainly reduce our hot subsidy, but it would increase general fund spending if, if departments were paying for that.
That's what I was going to say. So that would be a value-based decision that, that council and staff would have together to try and decide what the best way forward is. I know people like me to use the microphone, so I need to get closer to it. As I'm looking to my left. The, but yeah, it would, it would increase the expenditures in the general fund and in our enterprise funds, which are funded through either taxes or fees and rates to be able to increase the revenue in a hot-tax-funded department. So there's a lot of things to talk about in there, I think. I don't want to, I obviously don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, nor do I want to make any preconceived, have any preconceived notions about where council would prefer to be, but there are a number of perspectives on that.
Okay. That's a great question.
I knew there wasn't an answer.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, then?
No, I just want to, I just want to make sure that our nonprofits do get a voice or, you know, we receive feedback or input from them, because I think that is important.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's a great point. Sherman, I just would be remiss if we didn't say thank you to your civic center staff. You mentioned personnel and the challenges that you've had this last year. Your staff, I think, maybe out of any other department, I think, has shown tremendous adaptability and a willingness to do any job, whether that was cleaning out buses, or wherever they were shifted to, to meet an immediate need in the city. And I, I appreciate the culture that you establish in your team at the civic center, and I hope you'll convey on the city council's behalf our gratitude to your team for the service that they've done to the city over the last year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, and you know what, I'm looking at our time. I know that our bond counsel has a flight that he needs to catch. So I think, what, were you just saying? Is anybody concerned about whether or not I'm going to make my plane or not? Is that what you're saying, Stephen?
Well, I think half the room's on that plane.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think a lot of people are on that flight, but if it's okay with the council, I'm going to go ahead and move our bond counsel item up. It is item 3D, or 3, let me make sure.
3C.
3C, thank you, there you go. And Mr. City Manager, let's go ahead and do item 3C, just to make sure that Stephen can catch that flight.
All right, Mayor, thank you. I'm going to hand it to our Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer Laura Storres to introduce the item. But this is the certificate of obligation, notice of intent to issue, or it's authorizing the publication of notice of intent to issue. And it's just, it's one of the steps that you have to take prior to actually issuing certificates of obligation. Laura?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. And I would like to introduce Stephen Adams. I think all of you know him. He was here last, or last council meeting as well. And he's going to walk you through the detailed information related to this. Just as a reminder to council, as Jared mentioned, this is the first step of several steps for council to actually authorize the issuance of any debt. This does not issue the debt with the action that's being taken today. This is actually a not-to-exceed amount, and it sets a clock for a time period that if citizens would like to take further action, they certainly can. So with that, I am going to turn this over to Stephen Adams to go over the presentation, and I'll be able to answer any questions as needed.
Laura, one more quick question before you leave. It, it starts a process, and you, you said what it is, is it starts a process. What it isn't, is a final decision to do the project.
That is correct.
And nor does it obligate us in any way to do the project. It is just starting the clock, because it is a long process. You can't just wake up and go, oh, issuing bonds sounds good today, let's do that. Instead, it, it is a very deliberate, technical process. And so you're just saying, we're starting the process in case council wants to move that direction.
Absolutely. So council won't take further action until the August 10 council meeting? So there's a long period of time. We can bring this back and have multiple discussion items if needed. We are targeting to have this posted in the Amarillo Globe News newspaper starting this Friday, and then the following Friday. It will also be posted on the city's website. And again, that is if council approves this item today, then we will put the notices out there for citizens. So, all right. Stephen?
Okay, thank you. And I think we have a PowerPoint. By the way, if I miss a plane, I'd have to suffer and eat at OHMS tonight, because they were closed last night.
And our hot would increase, right?
That's correct.
Stay in our hotel again.
Exactly.
As, as Laura mentioned, this is the first of a process for issuing certificates of obligation. We have a not-to-exceed amount of $35 million. We don't have to issue that much. And, but you can, you don't even have to issue any of it. However, the statute does require that you do two publications in the newspaper on successive weeks on the same day of the week, and, and the city council cannot issue certificates of obligation until 45 days after the initial publication. And so the, what we're looking at here is for the renovation of the building that we've been discussing. The utility department would be paying part of it, because they will be using part of it as their departments move into that facility, and the rest of it would be paid by the INS tax rate. And so, as we mentioned, they're, they're paid by both sources. So if we went ahead with this, we would be able to sell the certificates on about August the 13th at a regularly scheduled council meeting and close on August the 31st. So this is the debt service schedule for the entire amount of the debt, and it would be between now and 30-year debt, and be paid for by those two sources. We estimate that the, the portion that will be paid by the INS taxes will be under a penny, and the portion that would be paid by the water utility is included in its current operating budget tax rate increases. It's only about $400,000 for the utility portion, and, and that could easily be absorbed in the rate in the budgets that are already in place for that, for the utility. The sources and uses of funds, again, it will pay the cost of issuance as well as the expected project costs. We don't know what those maximum amounts are right now. We expect at this point that it would be less than $35 million. And so we may not, we hope that we don't issue that entire amount. And then, just to let you look, this is the structure of your tax-supported debt after the issuance of these COs. And you can see that your debt falls off in future years. So you have a lot of capacity, or you will have a lot of capacity, and the fact that your assessed valuation is growing adds to the capacity. So you have a lot of flexibility for future tax-supported projects over time, that can be done within the same tax rate. And this is the water and wastewater debt after the issuance of these. Now, the water utility, as you are aware, issues debt on about every year, every other year. So it'll, it too has declining debt and a lot of capacity, but it is a growing utility and is an aging utility, and, and will have a lot of debt issued over time filling that in. Just to let you know where we are on interest rates, and we've been very, very fortunate in this. We're talking about, every time I come up here, I can tell you about the low interest rates. Well, it's not all my doing. You can see that the market interest rates for taxes and bonds have continued to come down over time, and, and all issuers, including the city, especially with your high credit rating, have been able to take advantage of that. Finally, this is the entire timetable of events with the publications that are required, and then the sale in August at the regular council meeting, and then the closing also in August to fund the project. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, council?
So this is a certificate of obligation, and the interest rate differs how from a, just a bond or a general?
This is the exact same credit rating as a general obligation bond, which is AAA, because it has the same tax pledge, INS tax pledge. So it's basically a parity with the general obligation bond. Your water and sewer bonds are also AAA by S&amp;P, so they also have pretty close to the same rate. There's probably a little bit of difference from a revenue bond to a GO, but very, very, very small amount of difference.
Okay.
So it's your best credit.
And we're the best of the best, right?
That is correct, AAA.
Going to brag for a second. I always say we're the prettiest girl at the debt dance.
Yeah, that you are at the debt dance. We call it being bond pretty.
Okay. Anybody else have questions about this process, or?
That's the presentation. Will we have discussion on 3C next? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Okay, so having heard the presentation, do we have a motion with regard to item 3C?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the resolution authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell, seconded by Councilmember Sauer. Now that we have a motion to approve item 3C, questions or discussion from the council?
Yes, so discussion. This is the largest bond we've issued, is that correct?
Well, it would be the largest certificate of obligation.
I'm sorry, CO.
It'd be the largest CO.
And so the, the other CO was $24,575,000, and it went to, correct me if I'm wrong, fire stations, renovation of a fire station, parks, lots of usage in the community. And then this, this primarily will be utilized, you know, just for admin and for, you know, certain utility payments. So it has a very specific use.
What year was that, Jared?
2007.
Okay.
My, my main question, and I don't know if this is directed at Mick or not, so I'm a little, well, I am concerned, but I'm uneducated, so I'll just ask for your patience in trying to go back through this legally. So I have a concern for my city in the way that it's moving legally through the issuance of a, of a CO with a project that's so similar to the project that was voted down seven months ago. So can you tell me what the difference is specifically between the two? Or I don't know if that's Mick or if that's...
I think Jared just explained, I think, what the real difference was in the election.
I mean, I think I can help with that.
Yeah, and maybe Jared, too, feel free to go back through it.
And I'm not the bond lawyer, but all this also has to be approved by the Attorney General, so that's the other side. The, the actual bond, the language in the bond proposition said for a convention center to wit the Amarillo Civic Center for the 275. It specifically said that in the bond proposition. So, so the certificates specifically say the city hall, which is, I mean, they're close, but they're, in, in the eyes of the bond council, they're different projects. And that's how the, the bond council came to the conclusion that we could do this.
And the, I think the, in addition to that, the city hall was not on the November election.
Right.
And part of this is we're victims of transparency, because we were trying so hard to tell taxpayers exactly what the full scope of, because what was on the ballot would demolish this city hall, which meant we would need a second location for city hall. So even go, even though that second location was not part of what was on the ballot, it was the next logical step that if the ballot passed, we knew we needed that second location. So we always talked about it as one project, $318 million. And I think that's now creating some confusion that what was on the ballot was new city hall, second location. It, it wasn't on the ballot. It was just in our discussions for full transparency, we always let taxpayers know there would be additional cost to the 275 million that was on the ballot related to a second location for city hall if it passed.
So I think I'm understanding a little bit more now. Can you go back through that for me one more time and break that out? The 275, and then the 20 million, and the 14 million, or was it, give me the amount.
The 275 specifically said that, you know, construction, blah, 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 related to a convention center to wit the Amarillo Civic Center. So everything that was to be voted on was only related to the civic center.
The, the language for the, for the, on the ballot was for the issuance of 275 million of general obligation bonds for convention center facilities, expansion and improvement, and the imposition of a tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on the bonds. Now, the resolution to call that election had a little bit more detail, but it would have gone into more detail about the civic center and the arena. It did not, well, and I didn't mean to emphasize that like that, but it did not include the civic center, I'm sorry, the city hall and...
The second location.
It did not, yeah, correct. It did not include renovation of, of the existing facility over Amarillo Hardware for city hall.
So was our intention, if that bond had passed, to issue a CO for the additional monies needed to renovate Amarillo Hardware?
Correct. And the reason for that was because the arena would have sat basically where we're... And the reason for that was because the arena would have sat basically where we're sitting right now.
Right. So you had included in that 275 to remove this building?
No, the...
I'm sorry.
The demolition was also going to be part of the certificate of obligation.
Okay.
The general obligation bonds would have paid for the, just the arena, construction of the arena, expansion of the Civic Center, renovation of the Civic Center, renovation of the Santa Fe Depot and also the construction of one parking garage.
Okay. And so where I may be missing the boat here, and just to make sure that I'm specific, the proposal did not include a 20 million for city services relocation and did not include a 15 million for a parking garage in the 318.5 million. Is that correct?
It included the parking garage.
Well, he said the 318, not the 275, and that's...
Trying to break them apart so that I make sure I understand what I'm being asked to vote on.
So let me, I can put it in a...
Yeah.
So when we made the presentations, we presented everything that we were talking about doing because we wanted to be able to articulate the total tax impact of everything. We didn't want to go out and say, hey, the GO bond election is going to cost you this many cents and then raise the taxes a little bit more for all the other things that had to happen if we were going to do that big project. So we went ahead and presented everything out of an abundance of wanting to make sure that everyone knew the full impact of what we're talking about doing, but from a, what is a general obligation bond and what is a certificate of obligation?
Yeah.
We did, we're also very clear about those. However, it is a much more confusing aspect of what we're talking about. It did muddy the water. That attempt at clarity did also potentially create some confusion for people that...
I think it was the right move then, I think, that, because it obviously articulated the total cost and we, the citizens, appreciate that. What it muddies the water on now is what we're moving to do now that's different from what we were doing then. And so we also have a presentation here about some alternatives for Civic Center. So we're still planning, we're still looking forward to that, but we're trying to do that at, you know, listening to the voters that said no and understanding that that would have to be privately funded. So this right here differs in the way legally is my concern, that we walk that fine line, that on a CO, those two don't overlap in the way of improvements.
Well, this CO does not overlap with the bond election because the statute, that's a pretty recent statute.
We just want to be super, super clear. We're going to pause and say, from our bond council, give us your official legal opinion that this project that we're discussing, City Hall, second location, does not overlap in any way, shape or form with the project that was on the ballot in November.
Let me, let me say it this way.
Okay, you say it.
I believe that the Attorney General will find that what we are doing is legal and that they will approve the bonds.
And I'll add...
Certificates, certificates. And they go back and look at every little detail.
Yeah, great. Okay, so that's a great legal, technical answer.
And that's the answer.
Just from a citizen's viewpoint, I'll say this project is different from what was on the ballot in November.
Okay. So educate me a little bit because I'm glad to hear, you're saying the Attorney General state would review this action and then they would give an opinion on it?
The Attorney General reviews every debt issuance of every political subdivision in the state of Texas and then they give an opinion that all of the statutes were complied with and that the debt is a binding debt so that nobody can come back and sue later and saying it's not, it's not a legal debt. So that's what happens on every bond issue, yes.
So Mick, you would be, or would you tell me that my concern for what the city may be doing legally shouldn't be my concern because it's going to be overseen by the Attorney General on a review?
No, I think everything should be a council member's concern about how this is set up. But I think what you're being told today and that we've examined and obviously all the professionals have examined is, when the project was described in the ballot language for the bond election, that was prepared by bond council to specifically describe that project and that project has limits. None of those limits are invaded in any way by what the project description is on these certificates. They're totally separate. So no, you should continue to ask those questions, council member, however, and if we don't have a good answer, we'll get you one.
I think that...
But that's really what's been done so far to ensure that this particular issuance of certificate of obligations will pass muster with the Attorney General and be marketable for sale.
And I think that the root of all of this is legislation from 2015 and that would have been HB 1378, 1379. I have, it prohibit, that prohibited a governing body of an issuer may not authorize their certificate to pay a contractual obligation to be incurred if a bond proposition to authorize the issuance of bonds for the same purpose was submitted to the voters during a preceding three years and failed to be approved. That's where the, that's the origin of a prohibition of certificates of obligation being used to pay debt that was not approved by voters in a general obligation bond election. Since City Hall or any component of City Hall was not part of that bond election, there is no, I mean, there is no, I go emphasizing a word again, there is no legal exposure with regard to a contemplated issuance of certificates for a City Hall project.
Real quick before you...
Okay, because I wanted to add one thing.
...a good point. In that 1378 in that House bill, it talks about emergency use and things like that. And I understand COs are typically for, you know, an emergency. So this is not being looked at under any other form other than a new project. This is not an emergency, is that correct?
Right, it's not an emergency. There's no requirement for COs to be used for emergencies.
And I think best practices are UC cities using them for infrastructure projects that are not emergencies frequently.
Absolutely. One other thing I wanted to note is Stephen Adams is our financial advisor. We do not have our bond council here today. That's okay, but that is Bob Dransfield. He has been the city's bond council for many years, has seen us through many debt issuances and he wrote the legal language on the proposition that was voted down. He also wrote the legal language on the resolution that's before you today and that will go into the advertising if this item is approved. He would not write in something that contradicted what we could legally do. So he has had his hand and his oversight in all of this. He knows exactly what was taken to the voters and what the city was communicating for a further debt issuance through certificates of obligation if the bond election had passed. And then now he has blessed and has written legally what we can do on a new issuance of CO if the council decides to do it. So he has put his legal opinion on all of this.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
So I feel like that's very clear.
Yes.
No, I feel like that's very clear now. I think it was probably muddied up in the way that it was presented, you know, during the vote and so I get why we got there. I appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Yeah, okay. Good questions, good questions. And, you know, again, we're back to, this is a complex process and project that as a council, we've been working on for at least three years. So I quipped earlier that in some ways, we're asking you to jump on an 80 mile per hour train that's already moving at the speed of having covered a lot of material in the last three years. So many times, we've asked the same question over and over again to understand it and it's going to take a minute just to onboard a new, so I'm really glad that you're asking questions.
Well, I appreciate that and I know we were talking earlier and my disadvantage is, is I got hired by the citizens to go to work with a real working council. And so like, I don't know how you would have gotten prepared or educated for this. They move very fast and they, they work really hard. And so I appreciate that and I applaud it, but because we're moving at such a fast pace, I don't want to miss the opportunity that I have to, you know, I guess, stop along the way and make sure we're still following the map. So a couple of things that go hand in hand with this, this is a large amount of money. It's very specific to a certain need. It's not necessarily going out in a multifaceted way throughout our community like the other bond was. This will be the largest, or I should say CO, this will be the largest CO that we issue. I believe I'm correct in that. And so with great caution, I don't feel like we ever got some valid updated cost for if we stayed here and looked at this building in the way of, you know, will this be, not that it has to be a no, but that it could be a not yet. In the way of hiring a $500,000, you know, expense for a consultant and going through that process, should we not also be looking at all our alternatives to stay here or to utilize other facilities? And so just because we may put this up and this may pass, I don't want to close the conversation that would allow us to just totally ignore all of our other options because we really don't know and not every voice has been heard on this as to exactly the impact and what we are or are not facing. So with caution, I'm just saying that to my fellow council members and hopefully with some grace in the way of, we all know, I don't know what I'm doing and I'm winging it here, but I'm learning quick and I'm just trying to get my point out there. I'm not trying to offend, but I also don't want to be quiet and walk away and wish that, you know, that I had spoke up, so.
Absolutely. Questions are welcome and this is the beginning, again, what is this? It's the beginning step in a process. What it isn't is a final determination. So, you know, whatever information, Councilmember Stanley, that you think we need to, that staff needs to work on and compile and put together before council actually looks at this item as an action item. We have about 10 weeks, 12 weeks, yeah, we have eight weeks to do that, two months. So yes, let's make sure that you have every opportunity as well as any other council member to ask those questions, gather that data. We can put it on the agenda for more discussion and we will so that by the time we come to an action item, if the consensus from the council is that we should move toward an action item, everybody has all the information they need to make that decision.
Yeah, I appreciate that and thank you for clearing that up.
Okay. So this is, we are, we have varied over to the action agenda. So this is an action item on, and we do have a motion and a second on the table to move forward and start this process. Any further, that's the motion, any further questions or discussion on the motion? Councilmember Smith?
I do have a question. I appreciate closed questions, but correct me if I'm wrong, we had the, we purchased Amarillo Hardware thinking that needed to happen to carry out the Civic Center plan we did have that didn't pass. And so that was done, but not only was that the reason, there was another reason expressed by Jerry Danforth that we are facing a lot of expenses on this building. And so we've heard estimates on what it would take to make this work in the near future, long-term future. And I think we're deciding as a separate issue from all that election to replace City Hall because the expenses of this building are going to be almost the same amount. Does that make sense?
Yes, I think, yes, I think so. And I think it leads to directing a question back to Councilmember Stanley about what information do you, would you like to see staff prepare? I hear in Howard's comment that he feels like he has seen, and again, we've been on this journey for three years and I completely appreciate that you're jumping on the train. What does staff need to prepare to get you the information you need to see the comparison, maybe that we've all been a part of the process of, the expenses to do the needed repairs in existing City Hall versus the cost of rehabbing a larger second location? Help us.
I think, that's great. Thank you for kicking that back over. So as I'm thinking through it here, last, you know, last meeting, we talked about being in a volatile climate. I mean, construction costs are at an all-time high. Some of my materials are 400% higher than they were when I started construction on a project. So I know firsthand the difficulty in working real hard and not making any money right now. I'm also concerned moving forward, you know, that we have a valid $35 million here with the potential increase. And I weigh that with the inexpensive money that we would love to borrow. So specifically, I would like to see a breakdown, not necessarily a preliminary estimate, Jerry, but a breakdown in if we stay, what does this really look like? And are these, are these items that, you know, must be taken, you know, in the way of needs or are they in want-tos? And then how affordable can we get it? The other option would be looking at any other facility that we may have, like a parking garage or a retail, you know, facility that we're not rented out in if we wanted to look at an option. And I'm not throwing that out as a good idea, I'm just saying there's multiple ideas out there that a finish out of a new building is a lot cheaper than remodeling Amarillo Hardware. And so in the way of the urgency that it was placed, you know, in front of me two weeks ago, I don't want to invalidate that, but we all know how construction goes, it's super slow. So I'd like to take my time and really get our hard costs. So on the agenda next week, if we could put that on there as a discussion and a presentation, I would like to see, are there any other options out there? And then what do we really look like here at this City Hall? And then one other quick question.
When you say, when you say, are there any other options, you mean like buying a different building and doing it or building a new building somewhere?
Right, no, and I'm not talking, well, no, I don't think I'd be looking at new construction. I think I'd be looking at if we currently own any other property that may, you know, be rehabbed or functional for a lesser amount of money. And once again, I don't think that's a good idea. I'm just wanting to look at all ideas.
I can tell you that we...
Which is good governance.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so Jared, I'm going to now hand you the football and ask you to just quickly run Cole through the two years of executive sessions where we have looked at other pieces of property as well as internal conversations that I know you and your team have had about existing facilities that we own. I mean, Jerry's right here in the room. So Cole, these are good questions. They are questions that the previous council worked extensively through.
Yeah, and I apologize, you're going to have to take a few minutes to walk me back through just because I wasn't here, but I'll catch up.
We don't have any existing buildings outside of that building that are of adequate size to be able to take what we have in this building. We did extensive work evaluating other buildings that we could potentially buy or we also looked into potentially finding a place that we could lease, both short-term and long-term.
Even entered into some negotiations for which we're still under confidentiality.
Right, right. We can't go into details on those, but we did look at a number of buildings around town that would have been alternatives to the Amarillo Hardware site. And they were significantly, you know, different.
Similar in this cost range.
Similar in cost range, similar in cost range. I can't, you know...
You keep going, I'm going to add in every time I have a comment.
Right, right. That's pretty much unless I'm missing. We looked, actually, we looked at, we probably did a really hard look where we were working in, with a lot of detail on at least three different, three different sites prior to Amarillo Hardware. Because we knew if we were to look at something like that, one, we knew about the challenges we had with this building, but two, if we were going to look at a larger Civic Center project, we knew we needed to land somewhere else. So that was, we had to answer that question before the project really was, was a topic of conversation because we knew once that happened, the cost of any new facility was going to be significantly higher. For good or bad, when people know the buyer is the city, they think that there's, that there's an unlimited checkbook and that's just not the case. So we always worked with blind buyers, we always worked with agents representing us, although, you know, there's, we do move that around on a regular basis just so we can maintain a little bit of competitive position when we're, when we're buying, so.
Knowing full well that, we didn't know if the bond was going to pass or not pass. If it passed, we knew all the property on the fringe of the Civic Center was immediately going up in value because all of a sudden, the entire world knew we needed it in order to build what the voters just told us to go and build. So there was a little bit of a rock and a hard place in front of the council in trying to decide, do we purchase this fringe property before the bond? So before we knew what voters were going to say on it, just so we could get the best dollar for tax... dollar for taxpayers in doing that.
Thank you for indulging me and kind of going back through that. As a business perspective, we now own those assets. We are also hiring a consultant that has a really good resume. We could be looking at a proposal that comes back from them that doesn't involve this City Hall relocating. Doesn't mean it's in the way. They could design something different that, you know, this isn't an obstacle. Now we're sitting on assets that we can sell and offset costs for our taxpayer. And, you know, perhaps we sell one and that offset, you know, pays for our renovation here or whatnot. So I'm just thinking in the way of, there's a lot we still don't know. I know there's way more I don't know, but there's a lot we still don't know and what our other options would be. I just want to move a little slower. And then let me ask you, I know this is a CO, it's up for a vote on a CO, but assuming that it didn't pass, is there anything that would keep it from going to the voters? Like, can we put this up as a, as a vote? Like, would this be, it wouldn't be a special bond election because it hadn't been put up. Is there anything, Mick, that would keep us from putting this up as a bond to stand alone on itself?
Instead of a CO?
Yes, sir.
No, we could do that.
Okay. So we could do that if we, if we pump the brakes a little bit.
And I want to revisit on the, in all of that two years of looking for how to solve the problems we have in this building, completely unrelated to the Civic Center project, the problems in this building got more severe January, February, whenever we had another boiler fail. And in the course of looking for solutions to this building, we did some analysis on whether or not we could use the space across the street that's currently unleased underneath the parking garage, especially in knowing that we have outgrown this building. We don't have the same square footage that we really need in order for us to provide the level of services that we want to provide to citizens. So would it be possible to move some departments over to that space? It's not leased, we're not making any money off of it right now. And what I understand, Laura, putting you on the spot just a little bit, but we're counting on, I mean, we left a ramp for that space to be unleashed for a little while in our pro formas on how that parking garage is performing to cover the debt. Which, by the way, even in COVID, without the sod poodles, without anybody at the Civic Center doing events, we're still doing fine on our debt covered, on our debt payments from the parking garage. So those pro formas have shown they were prepared with a very conservative approach. But we need those spaces to lease and be part of the pro forma as it ramps up and relies on the revenue from those leased spaces. So that, that option is not that appealing, wasn't that appealing to the council as we walked through this, just simply because we need it to produce revenue in order to cover the debt payment associated with the parking garage. Did I summarize that right?
Yes.
Council, anybody else have a different comment on that? So you're asking fantastic questions and in a lot of ways, you're summarizing two to three years' worth of work that's already been done to bring us to this point, but I understand how hard it would be to vote for something that you haven't been a part of all those conversations. So I'm glad you're asking questions.
Thank you.
Anything from the left side of the table? Okay, we've got a motion and it's seconded. I think if we've addressed concerns or all questions, we're ready to call the question. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so that passes with a 4-1 vote. Thank y'all for your patience in that. And I know this meeting is long, but we're getting good work done. Item 1E is to receive an update on Thompson Park Pool. Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, thank you. I think this might be the shortest presentation during the item, during the item one agenda. So Michael Kusheba is going to give us the latest. We are bringing Thompson Park Pool to you on a, on a meeting-by-meeting basis because we know there's a lot of desire to get this done. We're pushing as hard as we can. We've been partnering with the construction team. They've been doing a great job. None of this is, us putting it on here is not a shot at them or anything. We want to make sure that though, that our community and our council knows exactly what's going on and they have a chance to ask questions and get those questions answered so that nobody's surprised. We're already, you know, behind our projected and targeted completion date, so we want to make sure everyone has the answers. Michael?
Mayor and Council, Michael Kusheba, Director of Parks and Recreation. I joked last week that when I do a council update, it rains. Well, we got another two inches of rain about a week and a half ago. So it slowed construction down about three to five days. So we're looking at the end of June. So I think with the weather trends kind of stabilizing with the warmer weather, I think a good start date would be the Fourth of July weekend. So that's what we're aiming for, hoping that the weather holds out for us. Obviously, we get a nice warming trend. So that's what we're aiming for is opening to the public on that Fourth of July weekend. If we can open earlier, we will. Obviously, we've got a little bit of wiggle room there, but opening on the Fourth of July weekend. I also wanted to draw a little bit of attention to transit. They just expanded its free service to Thompson Park starting June 1st. So that covers Thompson Park Pool, Wonderland, and the zoo. Those are going to be through routes 21 and 12. So a big thank you to Marita Wella Dryly and Chris Quigley for facilitating that. So when the pool opens, we will have a transit route that runs right through there. So that's going to be routes 21 and 12. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Questions?
Nope, just appreciate the update.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Michael.
All right. Item 1F, Mr. City Manager, is a report on our quarterly budget. And Councilmember Stanley, just to let you know, we try at least quarterly to have an update on the budget. When we came on board in 2017, we wanted to kind of see high level, how we were performing, where we were behind in revenue, where we were ahead in expenses, and we didn't want to just get that once a year in a budget workshop. So we asked the city manager and he's done a fantastic job along with his staff of getting us quarterly budget updates as well as sales tax revenue because so much of our general fund, 30% or so of our general fund revenue comes from sales tax revenue. So we feel better as a council having a little snippet of are we on track or where are we off track? And that's the purpose of these quarterly budget presentations. But always, always, Debbie, Laura, Jared, anybody on the staff is available to go in a deeper dive. So, you know, these are typically a 10-minute or so presentation, but deeper dives are always welcome if you want to set those up and ask questions and get more information.
Great, thank you.
Director of Finance, Debbie Reed.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. So the mayor just gave me a great segue into the presentation. So this is for the first six months of the fiscal year, which is October through March. And the first fund that we're going to look at is the general fund. And as you know, this is the main operating fund for the city where most of the city services are provided through the general fund. So the first slide that we'll look at is the general fund revenue. And budgeted revenues through March were 115.4 million. Actual revenues have come in at 117 million, so that's a positive variance through March of 1.6 million. And the next slide will show you the major components of that variance. So you look at this slide, our property taxes are coming in 1.2 million ahead of budget through March. Now, please note and remember that most property taxes have been received for the year because they're due by February 1st. So what the difference is there is our collection rate. We project conservatively on the amount that we'll actually collect and that has been coming in better than we expected. The next three items, sales tax, hotel occupancy tax, and gross receipt tax, I'll cover in more detail on the next slides, but all of them are coming in ahead of budget through March. Licenses and permits is over budget by 622,000, and this is another plus for Amarillo. It's our positive development community going on. The building permits are very strong, so that's, that's very, doing very well through March as well. Now, charges for services is an area that has been affected by COVID. As you know, we had many things shut down. In this category, there are things such as the golf revenues, recreation fees, and the Civic Center events. So that's the main impact there from COVID, causing those revenues to be down through March. Fines are also down about 396,000. Again, I believe that, we believe that's an impact from COVID. Traffic fines and parking fines are down. There hasn't been as much activity, especially in the earlier part of the fiscal year. And then the last category there, interest income and other. Our interest income, obviously the interest rates are very low right now. We're earning very low interest rates on our money. So that money is about, that revenue is about 461,000 under budget. We are seeing the interest rates start to turn around. And then some of our other governmental revenues, some of it's a timing difference. They come in later in the year and some of it is that we're receiving COVID-type grant money in place of the regular grant money that we would have received in those areas. So we'll dive into sales tax. And you receive the sales tax reports on a monthly basis, but just as a reminder, through March, we're 5.54% more than last year and more than budgeted, which is about 1.7 million. We did budget conservatively, not knowing how long the COVID impact would continue into the current fiscal year, but our retail spending in Amarillo has rebounded very well. Through May, just to note, and you already have received those reports in your monthly packets, they're 8.8% above budget or 3.5 million. So again, sales tax is trending very well. The next slide is hotel occupancy tax, and Laura did a great job setting us up for this discussion. This slide shows you the 10-year history, so you can see a positive trend in hotel occupancy tax since 2011. We did have a small decline in 2017, and then when it came to 2020, you see the impact of COVID on the hotel occupancy tax. But the good news is, what I'll show you on the next slide, is how we've rebounded. And Laura already kind of explained those hotel occupancy tax rates, and we are at the max, as she mentioned. So the hotel occupancy tax for current year collections, we are 13.79% more than last year or 412,000. So keep in mind, the first six months of this year, or last year, were pre-COVID, and so we're already, in our first six months this year, we were still coming out of COVID. So this amount over budget is even comparing pre-COVID to still in COVID numbers. So it's a very good, very good result here for the city of Amarillo. Collections through March are 44.82% more than budget. Now, our budget was lowered somewhat, not knowing the impact of COVID again. But one other big positive thing is we recently refunded the hotel occupancy tax bonds for savings. During that process, the bonds are always rated by the bond rating agencies. And Standard and Poor's reaffirmed, for the city's GO bonds, our tax-backed bonds, they reaffirmed our AAA bond rating, but they also reaffirmed the hotel occupancy tax bonds, A-plus rating. And the big thing was they took away the negative outlook. So that's something that a lot of rating agencies were putting on a lot of cities was a negative outlook, not knowing the impact of COVID. But our economy has rebounded so well, I think it's a good indication that they feel that way as well. The Amarillo economy has turned around and our hotel occupancy is very strong right now. This next slide will show you a little bit more of that picture. So here, it's those same revenues. The blue bars are last year, the green bars are this year's actual, the gray is the budget. But look at the lines there. This is the occupancy percentages. So pretty much equal, the black, the gray line is last year and the yellow line is the current year occupancy percentages. October through December, pretty much the same as the year before. But in January, we were 10.9% more, and that was really before COVID really hit, 8.1% more than February last year and 21.5% more than March of last year. So we're seeing all of that hotel occupancy area rebound very, very well. The next area is gross receipts business tax. Here is where, this is franchise fees, where we charge different companies that use our right-of-ways to run their lines through the city. So we charge them either a fee based on their gross receipts revenue, or we do it as on a per-line basis or per-account charge. So this slide shows you what rates we charge for electric, gas, and cable. We charge a 5% on their gross receipts. For telephone, it's a per-line charge. And for city-owned utilities, our water sewer fund pays based on a per-account charge. They pay back to the general fund for using those right-of-ways. So to look at the results through the, through March for the gross receipts tax, we are ahead of budget about 337,000 or 4%. And most of the areas are in line with budget. Gas is a little ahead. And then on the telecommunications and cable, there was a legislative change in 2019 where if they had both utilities, if one company had both utilities, they could choose which one to remit their fees on. So we're still working through those changes there and which, and they were working through their changes on which one they were going to choose to remit. So there's still a little bit of a budget variance there. So those are all the revenues. The next slide, we'll look at the general fund expenses overall. We have 96.5 million budgeted, 100 million actual, with a variance of 3.5 million negative. Now, keep in mind, the amount over budget is due to the use of those excess reserves at the end of last year that council approved. That was for the Amarillo hardware purchase and some other IT, major IT projects that had to be done. If we took out those reserves, the variance would actually be 6.7 million positive. And I point that out to say that we're still being very conservative in our spending. The largest area under budget has been personal services, and that is due to a lot of vacant positions coming out of COVID where we had frozen positions. So we're in good shape on our expenditures. It was an on-purpose effort to use those excess reserves for those major projects, and they were excess reserves. Whoops, I'm sorry. Let me go back. So the net variance for the general fund, revenue has a positive of 1.6 million. Expenses, including those transfers, a negative of 3.5, which is a negative net variance of 1.9 million. If you take out the impact of those transfers, we're actually 8.3 million positive. And even with those transfers in there, at the spending level and the vacancies that we still have, we could end the year positive or even just a break even and not even have to use those excess reserves. So that's tremendous results for the city of Amarillo in the general fund. The next slide is utility sales. So this, in this area, we always look at the utilities that are in the general fund as solid waste. Solid waste fees are 2% ahead of budget through March at 210,000. Water sales are 3% ahead of budget, sales 1%. Now, one thing to think about with water, we were pretty dry all the way till April and May hit, so through March, we were still pretty dry. So we have to watch that going into the third quarter. We were, had a lot of rain, so that's less water consumption. Now, I did look, in May, is still slightly ahead of budget, but we'll have to see the impact of all that rain in May, how it comes into June's billings. So we'll watch that through the end of the year, although we do have our driest months of the fiscal year coming up. So we should, we should be okay, but we'll monitor it closely. Drainage fund is pretty much right on track with their budgeted revenues. We just want to show you a couple slides here, some charts. This is the, the sales, the water sewer sales, and then compared to the customers. Just kind of shows that our, they fluctuate, you know, depending on the weather. I'm going to show you another slide next. They don't fluctuate too much based on customers, but you'll see a drop there. That was when we changed software systems, and that was basically just two different ways of how we counted the number of customers and a little bit of cleanup, but no change in the revenues from the activity that you see over the years. But the next slide is very interesting. This shows the sales in relation to the precipitation. So obviously, when it rains more, we use less water. When it's dry, the customers use more water. And that's what you see. 2014 was what we call a near-normal year, and then in 2015, the very next year, it was the wettest year, so the revenues went down. 2019 was another very, did the 15th wettest year, and then 2020 was the eighth driest year. So water sewer revenues, well, really, it's water. The sewer are pretty straightforward, but the water fluctuates based on the weather. So we have to watch that carefully. But those funds, the enterprise funds are in good shape through March. So the health insurance fund, it's important for us to keep an eye on our medical claims. Last year ended very well, but that was because during COVID, there were many restrictions on elective surgeries, so we didn't have as many medical claims throughout the year. So for this year, through March, we're actually slightly under budget by 215,000. The medical claims in the first quarter were trending higher, and that's because they opened up those elective surgeries again. So we saw a spike there, but it's leveled out for the year, and we're continuing to monitor that as we coast into the end of the fiscal year. And this chart just shows you how the medical claims can fluctuate. This shows you medical claims since 2013, and then the city was self-administered until 2000, through 2015. So at the bottom of 16 through the current year, you'll see that little orange, that is the administrative fees. But you see it fluctuates. One thing with health, with health claims, they fluctuate based on claims activity, and that's something you just cannot project. A city can have a high claims year, one year, and not have another high claims year for three years. The important thing in the, in the medical claims fund is to have a healthy reserve, and we do have that in place, so we're in good shape there to handle something like that if it were to happen. So everything's looking good through the second quarter. And I would answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Any comments?
It's a great summary, Debbie. You did a great presentation. It's a tremendous amount of time and work. The budget is its own. The budget is its own thing. I mean, when you live in that budget and the fund accounting world, so to come to the podium and do a 10-minute summary is impressive.
I told Jerry I'm from the north originally, so I usually talk very fast. I've learned to slow it down, but I told him I would fast, I would talk fast slowly.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
All right. And obviously, any follow-up questions that you have, council, just run those through Jared. And whether it's a sit-down meeting or just a single item question, obviously, staff is here to get those questions answered for you.
Okay. Thank you.
And we've also got Andrew to do a very quick sales tax update, going a little more, a little more depth. Well, three slides, but one's the introductory slide, and the last one's the question slide.
One slide. And it's very hard to read, so I'll try and cover some of the highlights. The best part about my presentation is sales tax is great. So all these, all these numbers are really in the black compared to previous presentations. But for Councilmember Stanley's benefit, we get sales tax data from the Comptroller's Office, so we can track these industry performance measures on a monthly basis to see who's up, who's down, so we can kind of help predict the revenue source moving forward. This one is through calendar year-to-date through May. So this is November-through-March actual sales, because it's paid two months behind the actual sales. Overall performance, calendar year-to-date is up 10%. We've had 10 consecutive months of increases with sales tax.
I think we need to, I want to jump in right there, and just, we need to have a grain of salt with that, because we're comparing ourselves to an artificially low period last year. So we are going to see some really big sales, sales tax growth numbers, but when we look at how we compare to previous years, it's not nearly, you know, something that big, because those sales taxes were actually higher than what we experienced last year during the press period.
Correct. So yes, so it's about half that compared to two years ago. But retail's been the biggest performer. It's up 15%. But retail's actually seen 11 months in a row of increases, followed by food. Those are our two highest categories of revenue. It's about 56% to 58% monthly on performance as far as revenue goes. But food, food is the one, it's currently, it's had one negative month. Prior to that, we've been seeing increases. But when you break down full-service restaurants versus limited-service restaurants, full service is actually up three months in a row compared to about nine or 10 months of decreases. So that's, we're seeing that shift to people going from fast, quick service through a drive-thru to back out into the restaurant, sitting down, having a meal, so you can track that level of performance. Other thing to note, the only negative we've seen is professional services. That includes categories like information services, cell phone providers, satellites, movie theaters, which we know movie theaters are still hurting, finance, insurance, real estate, those sub-industries. Beyond that, all, all categories, and this is the first time we've seen all retail categories all in the positive compared to previous years. Also wanted to note, remote sellers, that's a new category that started collections December 2019. It's a 1.75% rate on those remote sellers that don't have a physical presence in the state, but they ship goods here locally. We continue to see that increase. The last few months have seen increases between 48% to 100% increases compared to last year. So that's just continuous performance of online sales. And not to be confused with non-store retailers, which is the Amazons and online sellers of the world that have a physical presence in Texas. That one's actually finally coming down a little bit. It's in the 40% range year-to-date. We've seen monthly numbers between 120% to 200% in that category, particularly during the pandemic where most of the shopping was online. But that number's starting to come down a little bit. And then just a snapshot on the workforce, the unemployment rate in April 2021 was 4.1% compared to 8.8% this time last year. When looking at the MSA, that number's actually 4%. It usually performs just a little bit better than the city limits, compared to Texas at 6.3 and US at 5.7. Overall, we track the 10 industries through the workforce data for showing decreases. That's, includes financial activities, down 1.5%, government down 1.4%, the construction industry is down 1.3%, and retail trade, transportation utilities, down just under a percent. But yearly change highlights, we've started to see a turnaround in leisure hospitality, up 36.5%, manufacturing 27.9%. So those are some pretty large increases. And basically, looking at the overall employee count, we're only a couple hundred down compared to pre-pandemic periods. So we've really seen our workforce numbers get back up to where they're, they're usually at. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Andrew?
Good news, Andrew. I mean, it's amazing news. I think back a year ago, we were bracing for impact. So this is a tremendous amount of favor that God has showed us as a community, just on financial recovery, economic recovery.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item 1G, which is an update on the North Heights rezoning initiative. We had a public commenter who commented on this item, and he has dutifully, I just want to note, thank you, Alan, for, so it's 5 o'clock, you've been here four hours waiting for this one item. You've been so patient. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Emily Kohler. I'm the Economic Development and Neighborhood Revitalization Manager for the city, and I've been managing this project for about a year. And it's become a bit complicated with the sequencing of the applications and the community outreach. So we wanted to come here today to mostly provide sort of all the background context for you before you see the item for consideration. So I thought Mr. Abraham did a really good job of introducing this. I am just going to touch on it in a little bit more detail. So we're considering the rezoning initiative, a project in motion. It's a term that we use for all of our neighborhood plan projects that are actively being implemented. The North Heights Plan was adopted in 2017, and there were eight different strategies within it that addressed zoning, especially amending incompatible zoning districts. And in 2019, the North Heights Advisory Association, who's our partner in implementing the neighborhood plans, they prioritize this as one of their first major implementation efforts. And so they formed a subcommittee that has been supported by Texas Houzers, which is a nonprofit based in Fort Worth that focuses on fair housing and affordable housing issues. And planning staff has worked with them from the beginning on the recommendations. And so those recommendations were submitted in December of last year of 2020 by the North Heights Advisory Association to the planning department to begin the city-initiated application process. And there's been a lot of confusion over this. So this is what Mr. Abraham was clarifying. I appreciate that. We are managing the technical side of the application, but we're doing this at the request of the North Heights Advisory Association. Like, the, the city didn't just decide to do this. This is something that the neighborhood prioritized and requested. And so we've, we've been facilitating it and assisting them in this. And the, the terminology becomes kind of confusing, because the technical zoning term is a city-initiated zoning process. But it's, really, we should be thinking about it as facilitating it for the neighborhood. And I think this is also really important, is to understand that these recommendations that are coming forward to planning and zoning and to you are based on what's in the neighborhood plan. And so I just have highlighted some of those. So encourage a mix of housing alternatives, discourage rental housing, address incompatible zoning, support a diverse mix of housing, amend inconsistently. This is all the language coming directly from the neighborhood plan. So when the committee formed, really what their charge was, was to fine-tune these neighborhood plan recommendations into an actionable proposal that could be submitted for the rezoning. So they're, they're not just, you know, random or arbitrary suggestions by a small group of people. The, the subcommittee that was working on this was really working to further implement what was already in the neighborhood plan. And the, the committee also identified their own kind of project goals or principles. And so this is really the why. Like, we, we're getting a lot of questions, like, well, why are you doing this? Why is North Heights doing this? And the, the most common answer that we give and the North Heights Advisory Association gives is that this is about rebuilding the neighborhood, and it's really about preserving the existing culture and character. And so it's not about wiping over and starting new, that this is a plan, there's already a lot built out there. North Heights is a historic neighborhood, and this is about rebuilding incrementally. It's also really important to the neighborhood that people who want to be invested in North Heights, to participate in this movement, have the ability to do it. So, and we talk about gentrification, are people coming in from outside, and this plan is really intended to help those who are from there become more invested and build wealth over time in that area. They remember North Heights as a place that was self-sustaining, that had its own businesses, the homes were nice, and they want, they want that again. So there are a few other things specific to the project goals as far as what we're doing land-use-wise. So decreasing industrial zoning, increasing single-family, decreasing multifamily, providing the right kind of commercial uses that are close to residences, so they have access to jobs and services. And then considering other amenities that will make that neighborhood attractive for single-family homes. And so I included all of these because this process has included a lot of community engagement. And it's a little bit different from, say, like, our neighborhood plans where, you know, people come, we want them to come and give their input, and then they expect to see that input exactly in the plan document. And this is a little bit different in that if we're hearing from property owners that don't, don't like what's being proposed, they don't understand why it's not changing. And so it's because if what they're asking for isn't consistent with what the project goals are, then those changes weren't made. And I'll touch on that a little bit when we start to talk about the process with planning and zoning. So this is the timeline. We, we've been working with the, the subcommittee in the North Heights Advisory Association since June of last year. And, but they had been working on this before, working with Texas Houzers on training and education. But we drafted a report with 11 different recommendations last, last summer and into the fall. And those recommendations are all written based on our zoning code rewrite, so we're taking that into account, that our overall code is changing for the city. So everything that's in here is consistent with what's being proposed in the zoning code rewrite. So once we finished drafting those recommendations, the North Heights Advisory Association worked on public outreach and education at that time, but it was during COVID. And so we had a really hard time reaching people, especially in the neighborhood, virtually, like, through digital platforms. So we did do a public meeting at that time, a Zoom meeting, and we also mailed to all the property owners at that time. And so that was before anything was formally submitted to the city. And we didn't get a lot of response at that time. So the Advisory Association continued on with the application. So they submitted a letter, a formal letter to the city, saying that they supported the recommendations and that they wanted to move forward with the city-initiated process. So the first meeting was in March 1st. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this case. And before that, we mailed about 2,600 notices. And so we've never, I just want to pause there, like, we have never done the amount of mailing for a zoning project like this at the city, both what's required and then also, like, proactive, because we found that that's the best way to reach people in North Heights. And at that meeting, we had, it was a Zoom meeting, we had over 50 people on there, and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt like there was just still a lot of confusion over what the proposal was, and asked us to work more directly with property owners and take some time to do that. And then when it came back to them, they wanted to see it in smaller pieces, because they felt like there are different character areas within the neighborhood, and it was hard to sort of sort through the different interests. So then we, we worked with the Advisory Association to do a number of workshops. And I know that some of you attended those, so you know firsthand what we covered there. And prior to those workshops, we mailed again, and we mailed a very detailed letter that had all of their properties that were proposed to change, what their existing zoning was and what it was proposed to change to. So every property owner that, that's property was expected to change, received a direct communication from us explaining that. We had gotten a lot of comments that things were unclear as far as the legend, the use chart, the maps were unclear. So we redid all of those and tried to make those as clear as possible. And then the committee worked with the planning staff to incorporate any changes from that outreach. And they held two more meetings on their own to try to communicate those final recommendations and the approval timeline. Oh, I skipped the last one. So now we're, we're in the present. So we, as staff, withdrew the original application at the May 17 P&amp;Z meeting, so we could create two applications that are going to cover smaller areas. So the application was tabled, so we had to withdraw that, so we could proceed with two new ones that are smaller areas. It, withdrawing it also means that we're required to re-notice, which is a positive thing for the neighborhood. There's actually only one change to the map, so what was seen by the Planning and Zoning Commission previously is very similar to what they're going to see again. And so now I'll kind of explain the parts. So essentially, it's the northern part of the neighborhood and the southern part of the neighborhood. So part one is what's shaded in yellow, and so that's going to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission next week on June 14th. And then the part that's shaded in blue, we're going to wait until the first part makes it its way all the way through council before we start the second one with planning and zoning, because we felt that that was going to get confusing if there were different meeting dates for different parts for planning and zoning and city council. And then I mentioned the recommendations. So you'll hear, like, the committee and the North Heights Advisory Association talk about the quadrants, and also planning and zoning is kind of familiar with the project this way, too. And there's a, there's a typo. The, the blue on the bottom that says quadrant four is supposed to be quadrant one. Apologize, I didn't catch that until I was sitting here. But we've organized it, so quadrants two, three, and four are that first part. And so those character areas were defined actually in the original North Heights neighborhood plan. And so that's how it was easiest for the committee to kind of work through, is looking at these different character areas. So part one is everything north of Amarillo Boulevard, and it's three quadrants. And then part two is everything south, and it's just one quadrant. And the recommendations are, there's 11 of them total, and I, I know that zoning is not everyone's favorite topic, so I'm just going to do those really high-level. But it's, it's how, the recommendations are kind of written in sort of plain English, but it's how we get to the more detailed, what's going on as far as the actual detail with the zoning changes. So this, this map is the complete study area, so the, the boundary plus just a little bit outside of the boundary is included in the rezoning proposal. So we looked at over 1,700 acres, and the proposal itself is 814 acres. So about half of the planned area is proposed to be rezoned. So if it's on this map and it's shaded, it's proposed to be rezoned. And then I was going to just go through the recommendations for this first part. So the application that you're going to see coming from planning and zoning is the, there, it's five through 11. And so the first...
Emily, I can see you have done a fantastic job putting all these slides together, but I'm wondering about, maybe just pull us to an end here and... I'm wondering about maybe just pull us to an end here, and then let's take questions from council, and let's let council questions drive maybe the end of this presentation, because I think you've done a great job putting, putting the data together slide by slide by slide. It's very, I think it's very self-explanatory, and just giving how much left we have on our agenda, I thought maybe we ought to...
No, I'm fine with that. I'm really used to people saying that they don't understand, and it's very confusing to them, and so I didn't want to, I just, it's, it's been the way this project has gone is, we keep hearing we're not giving enough information, but I am really glad to hear that you've gotten enough information.
Well, I appreciate that that's always the approach, though, because we do want people to feel like they have more information, so, and I don't want to step on any questions that council's going to have either about it, but...
No, I would just say, so that you can see what the recommendations are. It's going to be the northern part, and the northern part is really focused on single-family, and the appropriate sort of commercial uses to support single-family. I think that generally, we've, we're, we are close to having sort of consensus. We still have some property owners that are not on board with this, so I do want to note that, but we're, we're ready to bring it forward, it's just time for it to go through the process. So with that, I will just touch on these dates. So you should see this on July 13, on the July 13 agenda, and then we would, if you'd like us to, we can come back with part two, what you could expect to see for part two before that. But again, if you feel like you have enough information and don't want to see any background on that before, but that's on here tentatively, that we could come and do another update on the 27th for the second part.
Okay, so those are running separately as two different projects for notice to citizens that are affected by that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Excellent presentation. And I just want to compliment you and Andrew, I want to compliment everybody in planning who's worked on this project, because it has been citizen-driven, and it is a direct result to, one of our pillars, council, is customer service and redevelopment. So it actually touches two pillars. And I know the amount of time that Emily spends working on these neighborhood plans is a huge chunk. And so Andrew, thank you for your leadership. Emily, thank you for your dedication, not just your expertise, but the way you truly care about the citizens that are driving these projects, so I just want to say that on the front end.
Thank you. Yeah, I do care.
Other questions?
I just want to ask you the question. So I went to the, whichever one it was that was on the residential portion. So correct me if I'm wrong, this is basically what I kind of got out of it. I got out of it that the rest of the city of Amarillo basically has a plan for where you put retail, where you put homes, where you put all of this, and the North Heights has been kind of left out of all of that, and it's been kind of willy-nilly. You've got a business here, you've got houses here, you've got industrial complex right next to all of that, and that's not the rest, the way the rest of the city. And that makes me feel actually terrible, because they should have been given the exact same ability to, to develop their neighborhood that all the other neighborhoods in town have been given, and people, and I think that's where the confusion comes from, is there's no understanding that when you organize and put it in a defined way, that your neighborhood gets the opportunity to increase and grow and thrive, because, you know, you're going to get to do this here, you're going to do this here, this area is going to stay safe residential, because it's far away from the industrial, you've got all of these, and they've never had that opportunity on the North Heights side of town. And I think that's a lot of, personally, from sitting in that meeting and then lit, then them coming up and actually talking to me and saying, well, this, and this, and this, and then beginning to realize, oh my gosh, you guys have never been given the opportunity to have this thing laid out so that you can be very successful on this part of town. And so I am very grateful that this is happening and that this is going through, and that the North Heights really, this sets them up to be extremely successful. And I'm very grateful for the work that all of you all have done to get that to this point, and, and getting that kind of an understanding, if that was the prevalent view in the community as one way, and switching that view to help them to understand, this actually propels you forward, that, that is difficult.
Yeah, I think you described that really well.
Yes, sir.
Other questions for Emily? Okay, so this, this will be an action item coming soon, but this is our chance to get more information, or if you need staff to go digging or preparing more information before it's an action item, this is our chance to identify those concerns or questions. Councilwoman Samuel.
Oh, go ahead, Frieda, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I would like for Emily to share Plan Two with us, you know, before...
Yeah.
Before it comes as an action item and it can be summarized.
Come back on the discussion agenda a few weeks before you would hope for that to be an action item. Just as a reminder, follow-up, we'd like an update on how part one has gone, you know, just, we want another chance to discuss it before we act on part two.
Correct.
Will be two votes.
You'll see it for first reading, and then it'll be each...
Oh, it's all one plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so there won't be, there's two votes only on the plan as a whole. It's not a bifurcated...
But it, it'll be...
It is split.
Yeah, first readings are happening on different dates, but second readings will be on the same day, right?
What, what our plan is...
The 13th, and then the second reading on the 20th for the...
Let me go back to that.
So both plans would have, the first one would have to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission first.
We have them, no, we have them scheduled so that, I can't get back to it, but that slide with the map and the shaded yellow and blue on that slide, so part one, P&amp;Z, June 14th, and then you see it July 13th, that's going to go all the way through you, like, you'll make a deci, you'll get that recommendation, and you'll make that decision on the northern part before we start with P&amp;Z on the southern part, and that's estimated to go to planning and zoning on August 2nd.
And then it would come to council after August 2nd?
Yeah, tentatively, the first reading is August 24th for council, yeah. So you'll make a decision on that first part before, like, if you wanted us to come and do an update to you on part two, you will have already probably made a decision on part one, the northern part.
But if we could have a, just a report on the August 9th, if you could be on the discussion agenda for the part two, give us another chance to ask questions.
Sure.
Touch it again before it's on an action agenda.
And, and part two is different from part one, correct?
Yes, so can, can you, Jennifer, can you...
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Go back to, it's like slide seven, the map?
Some new information.
Yeah, okay.
With the yellow and blue.
There you go.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. So part one is everything to the north, and then part two is the blue to the south. So yes, they're very different, and that's why planning and zoning asks them to be considered separately.
That's what I wanted to get straight.
Knowing, Emily, that part two or phase two is a little bit more complicated than the, than phase one, would there be anybody opposed to separating these right on the boulevard and leaving those properties that are south of the boulevard to phase two?
We've noticed, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, we've noticed.
Starting over on the notice process.
I understand. So would that also apply to neighborhood services? Emily, if, if there were any recommendations from council on, like, a neighborhood services being relocated, or something that would be zoning, is that, is that a timing as well?
In that southern part?
Mm-hmm.
So that would be something that, like, if, if it came to you and you wanted to propose a different scheme for that, I think that this point, it would go through, but like, it could change when it gets to planning and zoning, and then when it gets to you, it could also change. I guess it's maybe the best way to answer that.
Okay.
So it's going as, it's just going as a recommendation, like, that's the way we've been explaining it to the neighborhood, like, these are recommendations, they go to planning and zoning, they can make a different recommendation for council, and it could change once it gets to council in the final approval.
So the appropriate process would be, like, planning and zoning will bring a, a final recommendation. This is not the final recommendation, even though notices have been sent. Phase one and phase two has been sent, but then there's no final recommendation as far as the zoning. Is that correct, Andrew?
Well, it's, it's staff's final recommendation to, to start the, the formal approval process.
Yeah, so there's, it's staff recommendation, then P&amp;Z votes on theirs, and that, that might change, and then that's what we will bring to council, and we'll explain the differences if they make a change in the proposal.
How do these two go hand-in-hand as far as timing with the rezoning ordinance?
The rezon, so the rezoning ordinance, we hope to bring shortly after this process completed, so hopefully the rezoning ordinance will come into September, early October. We're still fine-tuning that. We didn't want to confuse both of those processes with similar notices, similar changes.
Okay.
Back, back-to-back.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, we know this is complicated, and I mean, 2,600 notices, that, you know, this is a big project, and y'all have spent a lot of time working on it, we really appreciate the time. I, the presentation is so good, I wondered if it, if it's on the website, because if citizens were to say to us, we don't understand, we'd like more information about it, I really would like for this presentation to be available to the public, is that possible, Jared?
Yes, we'll, we'll get it on there, and we'll update as we go through the process.
There are multiple presentations on the website, lots of information.
Okay, yeah, great. So that's good for us as council to know where, I mean, we can obviously steer them straight to Jared and, and get him in touch with a staff member to answer their questions, but also letting people know that the website has answers about this, if they want to study up on it a little bit more.
Yeah.
Okay, thank y'all very, very much for that. Okay, item 1H. Counsel, let me tell you what I'm kind of driving for here, because I know it's really time for another bathroom break. I would, are y'all good to go ahead and do H, I, and J?
Together, yes.
I am, Mayor.
Okay, let's, let's push through those, and then we'll take a break and come back, do consent, and the last two things on our action. And we've got some sandwiches coming to help us power through our executive session, too, okay? Okay, great. So item 1H, Mr. City Manager?
Well, we have a couple of reports, and Dr. Sauer is going to be on the spot for both of them. So the first one is Animal Management and Welfare Advisory Board.
Okay, so Animal Management and Welfare met two Wednesdays ago, I believe. So at that, we got kind of an, an update of how things were going, and in that update, there are still some spots that are needing to be filled on their staff up, on the staff updates, and probably their biggest problem is animal care worker shortages right now that are being tried to be filled. The good thing is, is that they had five AMO trainees that started on April the 15th, and so we're up to 15 field officers now?
Fourteen.
Fourteen? Okay, that's one off. Fourteen field officers. So that's probably, as long as we've been on council, that's probably the best we've ever been staffed in animal management welfare. And so I think that's pretty, that's a pretty fantastic thing. On the vet services update, Victoria has managed to get two vets contracted, Dr. Lee and Dr., how do you say her last name, Geibl?
Geibl, sir.
Yeah, Geibl. So we've got two vets that are contracted to do spades and neuters and are taking care of things, and on top of that, this is what I was hoping we would end up seeing, is Texas Tech has got a couple of their vets that are coming in a day a week. Dr. Clayton Cobb, he's an associate professional, professor of general veterinarian practice, and Dr. Bethany Schilling, and she's an assistant professor. And so we've got that quality of veterinarian services that are now beginning to appear at Emerald Management Welfare. And I think that is, that's, that's a stellar opportunity to see the animals in Emerald being taken care of the best that we've ever seen that happen in a multiple number of years. So those kind of things are really good, they're still working on their community outreach and adoption programs, they've got a weekly adoption spot on the Eagle, they're setting up a partnership with Emerald Public Library, there's a summer reading program, and they, have they had the adoption event yet?
No, that'll be in July.
That's in July, okay. So, and then they've also done MetFest 2021, they had 56 free microchips implanted, and they had officer outreach, and so it's, things are really, really, really looking up. They've got a rescue group meeting set for June 30th, and interestingly enough, the breeder's ordinance update, nobody has applied for breeder's ordinance yet, for breeder's permit. So there's probably a little bit more education and understanding to help get that under, under control. But I, I will tell you this, it just, the, things are changing, and they're changing in a positive light, and things are really moving forward, and I'm really happy with seeing what's happening, and that all falls at Victoria's feet.
Yeah.
So we're very grateful. Thank you, Victoria, for all the hard work that you've done. And remind me again, your assistant?
Chris Schaefer.
Yeah, Chris Schaefer, he's a great guy. I got to meet him the last time that I was out there, so that's, so things are really looking good, and so it's, I, I see a lot of the issues and a lot of the other problems, I see that those are being taken care of, and we're, we're seeing a nice turnaround begin to happen in animal management and welfare, so that's that one.
What a great report. Any questions for Dr. Sauer? Okay.
Okay, I'm going to be fast. All right, beautification and arts, so we met at 11:30 today. So there's really, at this point in time, really, the biggest thing that's going on is the beautification project update. So there's a deadline, it's open right now for people to download the opportunity, I think it's an RFQ, I can't remember for sure what exactly the nomenclature for everything, but so far, 18 people have downloaded for the beautification, and the, it's on the Rails to Trails at Western and Plains on the northeast corner, if I remember correctly. And so there's a deadline for questions, June the 14th, and proposals will do by June the 24th, and then hopefully, pretty quick after that, July the 13th, we'll be announcing who will be awarded. And this one is not a matching funds grant, but this is a reimbursable grant. So in other words, whatever they put in, they're going to be reimbursed up to $30,000 for. So I think it's a real great opportunity for the first beautification project. For those, anybody that happens to be listening, you can email purchasing2@amarilla.gov to get information on the beautification grant.
Okay.
The only other thing that I would throw out there also is, in our part of the Thompson Park pool update, part of what we were very, also very interested in was the fact that they've got two pieces of art that we're going, that actually Jacob Reading is the one who was awarded that one, who's doing that out there. I think one of the most interesting things about that is they're getting those to a point where they're not very far away from install, installing those, but the great part about that is they've come up with a means that they are standardizing the installation, the way that it will be installed, so that hopefully, as time progresses on, we can put the same kind of installation attachments in other parks around town, and so... in other parks around town. And so, now then, we can see this art not just be there, but you can actually see it be moved around town and have multiple opportunities for the arts and beautification to be increased in Amarillo. And I think it's a, it's just a great testament to, I'm grateful for Michael Kishibin, the hard work that he's done, he's already gone, I think, at this point. But, the things that are happening, that, once we were able to get this committee started, and the way that the, that things have turned out for arts and beautification in Amarillo is really pretty great. I wouldn't have ever imagined this in a two-year period of time.
Any questions for Dr. Sauer on that beautification? Just to highlight that item B on our consent agenda today was about summer mowings and how the city partners with TechDOT to do supplemental and additional mowing. So, I think that's important, because we want our I-40 and I-27 corridors to reflect well of our community. They're our curb appeal, basically, and I think it's important.
It's got a lot of rain.
Yeah, last year-
Go two months.
Yeah, it cannot, with all the rain we've had, and last year, we canceled those in part of our COVID response, when we went really thin in our budget. Those were the type of things that we set aside and did not do. So, we want to get back to doing those so that our city is clean and beautiful, even for people who are just driving through it. Anything else on that? Okay, good. That was very fast, Eddie. Good job. Discuss board and commission mid-year appointments. Okay, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Mid-year appointments to boards and commissions is not something that we typically do. It, we have definitely designed our board and commission appointments, the annual appointment process that happens in November, to avoid having board and commission appointments come on a piecemeal basis to council. It also allows one time in the year, one period of time in the year, where everybody can apply for anything they want, rather than having to track the website and know which boards and commissions they can apply for now, and because we had a rolling period of applications for each one of those individual boards and commissions, and it got pretty daunting, because we have so many boards and commissions. So, that's why we went to annual board appointments. Right now, we do have a number of, as happens mid-year, we usually have quite a few people that roll off boards and commissions, because they move because of a variety of things and reasons. But we have looked at all of our boards and commissions that do have vacancies to identify which ones would fall into the critical category. We want to make sure to not do a whole bunch of ad hoc appointments, but we do have a number of boards and commissions where the lack of members is causing challenges with being able to meet quorum and have their meetings and do the business of that committee. So, I've got six boards and commissions where I'd like to recommend that we come at the next meeting, or sometime very soon, to go ahead and make some interim appointments, so that we can get through the end of the year on those boards and commissions. So, one is the Audit Committee, where we have, we have to fill a vacancy that's made by a council member, so we have to put a council member into our own audit committee to do, to perform the audit of city financials. We also have the Local Government Corporation, LGC. We have one vacancy there. We do have one applicant that has agreed to serve. That is a very narrow pool, so I would always remind council that in addition to the people that have applied in November, or for the November appointment period, you can also bring anybody you want to nominate, whether they've applied or not. As long as you've talked to them and you know that they're willing to serve, you can nominate somebody other than somebody who has applied. So, that, there is, there is that opportunity as well, and I will be reaching out to each one of you prior to the next council meeting, just to make sure y'all have an understanding of how many applicants and how many people we have available to choose from for each board and commission. We also have the Parks and Recreation Board, we have two vacancies, we have lots of applicants for that one. We have seven applicants that have all said that they're still interested in serving, if council chose to appoint them. We have the Construction Advisory and Appeals Commission, and that one is unique in that each person that's on there has to represent a specific industry, and this one is for an insurance agent. We have an excellent person that has applied for that, but again, if there's anybody else you want to nominate, you can certainly do that as well. Animal Management and Welfare, we have one vacancy. As we were just talking with Dr. Sauer just a moment ago, one of our key partners now with the way we've reinvented, with the way we are moving right now is Texas Tech School of Veterinary Medicine. We would recommend that we fill that with a Texas Tech School of Veterinary Medicine representative. We could codify that through an ordinance at a later time, but you have all the authority that you need to be able to appoint one of those people right now, if you so chose. That's just a recommendation. Y'all may have talked about it at the board meeting, or at the recent advisory committee meeting. I don't know if y'all did.
No, we didn't talk about that.
But I think that was something that would be very useful for us, because they are the highest, that would help us provide the highest level of accountability to our community. They're, it's a true professional check and balance, it adds to the credibility of the department having the School of Veterinary Medicine on our advisory committee. As you said earlier, they've already got people coming and working in our facility, they're committed to the success of the facility, and they're committed to the health of our local animals, so.
And they'll be providing students to do services as they ramp up.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And finally, Convention and Visitors Bureau, we have two vacancies. We also need to consider replacing Councilmember Hayes, who served on the CDB for a long time, but we do need to make that replacement as well. Other than that, while we do have other boards and commissions that have vacancies, they're not even close to having, we don't see them as being, having challenges making meetings or being able to make them work. So, there's no reason to accelerate those boards and commissions into a mid-year appointment process. We really just want to fill, fill the holes in the dike, to make sure that we are still able to do the business that we need to do for the rest of the year.
Questions on that, council? Jared, could we get a list? I know that in the last couple of years, you guys have systemized this so much better, so that citizens can better engage, just like you were explaining, and I know that part of that was investing in software to better manage that process. Can we get a printout of people who applied? Number one, the open positions that will be on the action agenda in two weeks, you just ran through them verbally-
Yes, ma'am.
But it would be nice to have a list, and then-
All of the applicants, yeah.
Previously, yeah, the city secretary has put a packet together for us that had those, had those open spots, and then in the, attached to it, the applications that had been filed in November for people that were interested in those slots, and then, like what the city manager said, we're not limited to those applications, but they're a great starting point for us, as we're doing our homework and getting ready for that action item on next council agenda.
We have that, I think it's pretty readily printable, and we could put that together for you, and either scan all of that and send it to you prior to the end of this week, or we can have a packet that y'all can come pick up at any time this week.
Yeah, if y'all will just let Leanne, Howard, do you prefer email or packet?
Email.
Okay, Eddie?
Oh, email.
Okay, I prefer packet.
I prefer a packet as well.
What do you think, Cole?
Yeah, you can email it to me, it'd be great.
Okay, so that gives you the breakdown, Leanne.
Thank you.
Are we only going to consider those that applied last November? Are we going to open it up?
You can, you can also-
I know, but are we going to invite the public to apply?
We had not planned to do that. We, obviously, technically, we can do that. We have the technology to do it, we can open up the application portal, so that people can apply online as well.
Jared had asked me, although, we had a little dialogue about that, and just, I think there is a tremendous amount of value to having a once-a-year push, something that gets advertised, something that the media follows, something that people began to expect, that we do board appointments in November. If you're interested in serving on a board, the time to apply is October. So, I think there's value to the citizens for that. Inevitably, we have people who pass away, who move away, who, for whatever reason, can't serve, and so what we don't want to do is leave a board high and dry, not able to make a quorum easily and do the service for the, for the city. So, I think this mid-year approval is for a very limited number of boards that actually need it to meet those quorum requirements. So then you get in this catch 22 of, well, do you open the portal just for this limited? Because then I think you start taking away from having that big annual event that people are anticipating and media's helping us promote. So, I don't think there's a wrong way of doing it either way. I'm open, I know Jared's open to hearing council weigh in on that, but... I think there is a good middle ground option in that we can ask any, if we see the list for these, kind of what I'm calling 911-type appointments mid-year, and we think the list doesn't have a qualified candidate, then we can ask folks, you know, or make a recommendation from the dais to appoint someone that we personally think would be a good candidate, which we can always do that, we do that in November, too. Yeah?
Like it.
Okay, do you, does that give you the guidance you need then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that'll be an action item on our next agenda. All right, we have anticipated getting to item 1J, which is to request future agenda items, or any reports from the city manager, anything that needs to be mentioned or specifically asked for.
Mayor, I'd like to see an update on mowing.
Okay.
Are you saying mowing of city facilities, mowing of Rideaway?
Of Rideaway.
TechDOT Rideaway, I guess?
TechDOT, yes.
Okay, I-40 and I-27 primarily? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, going back to our P3, and the potential of having a, oh, a citizen-led committee, can we put that on the agenda, as far as, like, I would like, if you guys like this, I would like for all council to make a recommendation to help form that. Is that the right way to do that, or would you like to have a discussion about that before we put that on the agenda?
Yeah, let's, let's take that in the process. I think first, we have to decide whether or not we want to hire that firm, which will be an action item on the next agenda, and then, duly noting that you want a discussion point, at some point after that, for us to talk about how are we going to engage with that from a community standpoint. I think it's very logical, and, you know, we did that two years ago, so I think it's very logical for there to be a citizens committee, and that comes from council input. You know, the mayor can make those appointments, but really, in the past, traditionally, I have always sought council input on those citizens committees, so.
Okay.
Usually, and usually what we do, Cole, is we have you submit a list of, like, if we know we're looking for three appointments from each council member, then we would ask you to maybe submit a list of eight to 10 people, and then staff goes through and tries to kind of make recommendations, basically, because we want the committee to represent all quadrants of the city, and, you know, we'd like a gender diversity on there, we'd like an age diversity on there, we'd like ethnic diversity on there. So, they, that gives staff some options, and then they come back to us with a recommendation of maybe who to appoint, and then we dialogue about it as council and make final determinations. So, that's sort of how we've done it in the past, and I, I think-
Yeah, sounds good.
But we'll, we'll kind of try to do all that in order, so not at the next meeting?
Meeting after.
But at either the meeting after, or at a meeting after, if we, as a council, approve the PPP, engaging the firm and asking them to move forward on Phase 1A and 1B. Yeah? Okay.
Good.
Great question, great comment. Okay, let's approve the items on the consent agenda real quick.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Anything, I guess it's all consent, so all those in favor of the consent agenda motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. Let's take a break, and then we'll come back, do those last two items.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, because they can't get in the building.
We are looking at Agenda Item 3A, Consider Approval of a Resolution in Support of the Texas Heartbeat Act. Mr. City Manager?
Right, Mayor. Senate Bill 8 of this most recent legislative session was a Texas Heartbeat Act statute. Basically, it prohibits the, prohibits abortions after a heartbeat, is there. This is a resolution by the City of Amarillo that would support, endorse what the legislature has done there, and I'm not actually looking at the ordinance, I need to get that, so apologize. So, in essence, the purpose of the act is to protect unborn children throughout the state. This would, in essence, have the City of Amarillo endorsing that and supporting that. I can answer any questions you have, or I can, about the ordinance, or about the statute, or the resolution, it's not an ordinance.
Any questions, council? Yeah? Okay, no questions, then we would entertain a motion on Item 3A.
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve the resolution in support of the Texas Heartbeat Act.
Second.
I just went early, I'm sorry.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Powell and seconded by Councilmember Stanley to approve Item 3A. Any discussion or questions on the motion?
Caught me off guard.
Yeah, okay. All of those in favor of Item 3A, please. Well, I will just say that I appreciate, I appreciate the governor's heart, I appreciate the legislature's heart behind this ordinance. I know there will be folks in our city who do not agree, but I think it's important to take a stand on this issue.
And we're approving a resolution and not an ordinance, is that correct?
That's correct.
One reading, resolution.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments? All of those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item passes with the 5-0 vote. Item 3B, Mr. City Manager?
Right, Mayor. Mayor, this is a resolution authorizing the general prevailing rate for per diem wages. This, we did this for the first time three years ago. You, when you are doing contracts, especially federal contracts, you have the option of either adopting your own prevailing wage rates, or you can adopt Davis Bacon wage rates, which are federal wage rates. This will adopt local wage rates. So, we did this before we started the MPEV project, and it has worked well for us, saved us a lot of money on construction projects. So, this is what we're proposing, proposing that we do again.
Okay, any questions for the city manager about that item?
If you've got any questions, we've got Trent Davis, Director of Purchasing, here to answer those questions, but it sounds like it's, well, I don't want to, I don't want to say it's pretty straightforward if there's questions.
Does this kind of address, you know, we had someone address us in public comment concerning wage rate?
Yes, sir.
And this kind of pretty well, when I look at this, almost every single one of these rates is actually above that rate.
Yes. If I was to read into that, there was probably a preference, a desire for higher wages.
Yeah, I think he was talking about city employees. This is contract labor, so.
Okay.
And, and real quick, if I can, if you look at what Mr. Miller was saying, on your prevailing wage rates, your carpenter is a minimum of 1577, and for Davis Bacon, it'd be 2225, plus $7 a day fringe. So, you're saving a lot of money by adopting this, and that's just one of the many I looked at, but.
And it's just the minimum. It doesn't say this is what everybody, every person working on a, on a project gets paid, it just says they're at least going to get paid this much.
Correct.
It's a baseline.
Yes, ma'am.
A baseline, okay.
Okay, do we have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the resolution authorizing the City of Amarillo proposed general prevailing rate of per diem wages.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve Item 3B. Any discussion or questions from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That item passes with the 5-0 vote. Okay, that's the last item on our non-executive session agenda, so at this time, I would ask Mr. McCamey if he would please read our dismissal language to exec.
Yes, Mayor. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, a closed session of the Amarillo City Council is announced today, June 8, 2021, at 6:03 PM, under the following authorities. Section 551-072, discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, sell, or value of real property, and public discussion of which would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining position regarding property located in the northeast quadrant of the city. regarding property located in the northeast quadrant of the city. And under 551.087, discussion regarding commercial or financial information received from a business prospect and/or to deliberate the offer of financial or other incentive to a business prospect on projects number 20-05-01, number 21-01-02, number 21-01-03, and number 21-02-01, and that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. We're now dismissed to executive session.